I'd like to start the regular meeting of the Board of Education of the San Francisco Unified School District for December 14th, 2021 to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Alexander?
Here.
Commissioner Bogus?
Here.
Commissioner Collins? Commissioner Lamb?
Here.
Vice President Maliga? Commissioner Sanchez?
Here.
President Lopez?
Here.
Student Delegate Lamb?
Here.
Student Delegate Liang?
Here.
Okay, and just to note, this is our last regular board meeting of a very long year, and I appreciate all of the work we've done. Section A is general information. Section B, opening items. Item one is our land acknowledgement. We, the San Francisco Board of Education, acknowledge that we are on unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramataxaloni, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. As the indigenous stewards of this land, and in accordance with their traditions, the Ramataxaloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretaker of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. As guests, we recognize that we benefit from living and working on their traditional homeland. We wish to pay our respects by acknowledging the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatax community, and by affirming their sovereign rights as first peoples. Item two, approval of board minutes of the regular meetings of November 9th, 2021, October 26th, 2021 corrected version, August 10th, 2021, June 8th, 2021, April 20th, 2021, and the special meeting of November 16th, 2021. I need a motion and a second.
Second.
Are there any corrections? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Student Delegate Lamb?
Yes.
Student Delegate Liang?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins? Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice President Maliga? Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
President Lopez?
Yes.
Item three, superintendent's report. I call on Dr. Matthews.
Thank you, President Lopez. Good evening, President Lopez, and commissioners, and members of the public. Good evening. I know many of us are feeling heightened concern about the new COVID variant Omicron. The San Francisco Department of Public Health has assured us that San Francisco is relatively well-positioned to handle COVID-19 and its variants because of our high vaccination rate, our high booster uptake, and our other local measures such as masking and testing. Health officials continue to emphasize the importance of vaccination, boosters, and other prevention strategies needed to protect against COVID-19. One of the things I said over a year ago is that we have to take care of each other. Everyone five and older can get vaccinated, and boosters are recommended for everyone 18 years and older. If you or your family members are not yet fully vaccinated, please make an appointment to get vaccinated at any of the vaccination sites on our website as soon as possible. Thank you for following all of the San Francisco Unified COVID safety practices, including daily screenings, masking, testing, and quarantining. Congratulations to Balboa High School, the football team. On Saturday, the Buccaneers defeated Taft High 43 to nothing to become the 2021 5A state champions in football. And one point in the game, they had a fourth and goal from the 40-yard line, and then they easily threw a 45-yard touchdown pass. We look forward to honoring the Buccaneers fully at a future board meeting, and City Hall has assured me that the Buccaneer colors of orange and blue will light up City Hall tomorrow evening. Free grab-and-go meals are available for children during our winter break. These grab-and-go sites will be open on Tuesday, December 21st, from 2:00 to 4:00. On this day only, pick up 10 days' worth of breakfast and lunches, including fruit, vegetables, and milk. Meals are for children 18 and younger. Food is available while supplies last. Adults can pick up meals for up to four children. For additional resources regarding food, please visit sfusd.edu/foodresources or call 311. This month, we're taking time to celebrate something that's at the heart of what public schools are all about. We have Inclusive Schools, which means we include everyone, and I mean everyone, in our classrooms and our schoolyards. Historically, Inclusive Schools Week has been an opportunity to honor all students with disabilities as full members of our school communities. In recent years, it has become an opportunity to learn and teach about the intersection of disabilities with other categories of identity like race, gender, class, cultural heritage, language preference, and other differences. You can check out some research sources for your child and family on the Inclusive Schools Week page at sfusd.edu/sped-isw. I hope that we all remember to be inclusive in the classroom, on the schoolyard, and in our communities all year long. School sites will be closed from December 20th to December 31st for winter break. Our offices will be closed on December 24th and December 31st. And I want to personally thank each and every one of you for your commitment to our students during this year. This has been quite a year. Just think, 12 short months ago, students and teachers were in distance learning, our buildings were closed to the public, and we were in the worst of the pandemic. In the summer of 2020, I said we have to take care of each other, and just look where we are now. We brought back our youngest students to in-person learning in April, and almost all of our students in August. We watched as 90% of our staff got vaccinated and 95% of our 12- to 17-year-old students got vaccinated. Our students have truly led the way. I want to thank each and every one of you for taking care of each other, and it's truly my hope that you will have the happiest of holidays and a very, very joyous New Year. President Lopez, that ends my report.
Thank you for your words. Now we'll hear from our student delegates.
Thank you, President Lopez. We'd like to start off by recognizing our student leaders who walked out of class last Friday, December 10th. We thank students for their organizing and leadership and for taking action. The Student Advisory Council and we, as student delegates, want to do our best to support students, and in addition to reading off the students' demands today, we would like to name some policy actions we have done as student representatives and what we look to do in the future. The list of student demands reads as follows. The creation of a support system for survivors of sexual harassment and abuse. A safe reporting process of incidents without further traumatizing and triggering survivors. No victim blaming. Clarity and accessibility in terms of information about students' rights. Disciplinary action and survivor protection onsite, even if abuse occurred offsite.
On November 15th, the SAC held an open meeting where Kiki Williams from the Office of Equity came and presented on what Title IX looks like in the district. Our SAC Student Advisory Council Social Justice Committee is working on a resolution that would incorporate some of the demands as action items. And our Curriculum and Instruction Committee held a meeting on November 30th to learn more about SFUSD's health education requirements, so that we can better make recommendations to improve the health curriculum. We're also looking to work with other youth organizations like the SF Youth Commission to address student concerns. Per the letter sent out to students on Friday, we're glad that the district is expanding the Equity Office, and we want to work with Superintendent Matthews in facilitating the creation of the Sexual Harassment K-12 Student Advisory Group. Also, given the restrictions on what qualifies as a Title IX complaint, we're glad that complaints that do not meet the criteria are still being addressed under the SFUSD bullying and harassment guidelines in the handbook. We're continually working on this issue and hope to give an update in our next report. We also have our resolution to align the SAC under the Board of Education office up for second reading tonight. We're excited to take this next step in working under the Board of Education and continue to bridge the gap between students of SFUSD and the Board. As always, our meetings are public, and our next meeting will be on January 3rd at 6:00 PM. Thank you, President Lopez. That concludes our student delegate report.
Thank you to our student delegates. Item five, under Section B, recognitions and resolutions of commendation. There are none tonight. Item six, recognizing all valuable employees. I will be calling on Superintendent Matthews.
Thank you, President Lopez. Tonight, we want to share a brief news clip that features a Lincoln High School student, Michael Yu.
There is such a thing as a first-time entrepreneur in the times of COVID. A student from Lincoln High School in San Francisco has created 1,000 vaccine card protectors to donate to clinics. ABC 7 Senior Education reporter Leanne Melendez met up with Michael Yu today to discuss his advocacy work to encourage people to get vaccinated.
Michael Yu and his brother Christopher have been pushing students at Lincoln High in San Francisco to get vaccinated. For Halloween, they dressed up in a vaccine and an antibody costume to put kids at ease while getting vaccinated.
Actually, they loved it. They even wanted to take selfies with me.
At Lincoln, Michael is known as the student who has created these vaccine cardholders that are given out at school clinics. He personally paid for all the materials needed.
Actually bought them all online with the money I got from a previous internship. That was actually about researching inserting genetic material into cells.
Michael, his brother, and cousins then assembled them to give out to students. As of yesterday, 90% of those 12- to 17-year-olds in San Francisco have been fully vaccinated. The vaccine was only recently approved for the younger kids. 23% of them, 5 through 11 years old, have received both shots.
We really focus on just bringing the community together, helping each other out, and we want to give that entrepreneurial spirit to students like Michael. He has done so many great things. He's also done things for our special education students.
Michael's advocacy work is getting some attention outside of the school. Next month, the San Francisco Board of Supervisors will honor him with a special commendation.
I just feel honored to be getting this award, and I definitely will not be stopping with making projects like these in the future.
In San Francisco, Leanne Melendez, ABC 7 News.
Check out Mike. A big thank you to Michael Yu, to the entire Lincoln High School community for moving this work forward, and we continue to be excited about the entrepreneurial spirit of students like Michael, of the students in our San Francisco School District. We know that when we talk about each and every student getting quality instruction and equitable support, Michael is an example of that. So, thank you, and now I turn it back over to President Lopez.
Great. Moving on to Section C, public comment on non-agenda items. Item one is the protocol for public comment. Please note that public comment is an opportunity for the Board to hear from the community on matters within the Board's jurisdiction. We ask that you refrain from using employee and student names. If you have a complaint about a district employee, you may submit it to the employee supervisor in accordance with district policy. As a reminder, Board rules in California law do not allow us to respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment time. If appropriate, the superintendent will ask that staff follow up with speakers. Item two, comments from SFUSD students. We will hear from SFUSD students who wish to speak on any matter. Students will have up to 15 minutes of the general public comment period and may also speak at any other public comment time.
Thank you, President Lopez. So, please raise your hand if you are a student and would care to speak on any item at this time, and can that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please?
Buenas tardes. Por favor, levante su mano si desea añadir un comentario público. Les recordamos que esto solamente es para los estudiantes. Nadie más. Gracias.
If you're a student, please say "gracias" to the public. If you're a student, please raise your hand. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Larry?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, Larry, are you a student?
No, I just have my hand wringing.
Yeah, can you wait till... Yeah, just, thank you. Are there any others? Any students who would care to speak at this time? Seeing none, no students.
No student?
Okay, and this is a reminder that students will also get to comment throughout tonight's agenda. Item three, comments from the general public. I'll be limiting this to 15 minutes as well. Can we check if there are any speakers?
Yes, please raise your hand if you care to speak to any items that are not on the agenda this evening. Can that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please? Again, not on the agenda.
Por favor, levante la mano si desean hablar al respecto de uno de los ítems de la agenda. Gracias.
If you want to add something to the topic, if you want to add something to the topic, if you want to add something to the topic, please raise your hand.
Thank you. And President Lopez, you said total of 15 minutes, one minute each? Thank you. Hello, Larry?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, great. Hi, School Board, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I went to the low school site council meeting, and they were talking about the increase in Ds and Fs, especially with the freshman grade level. And they were saying, like, for math, they look at other things besides grades because students, some do not test well on quizzes and tests, but they are very intelligent. So, a teacher had mentioned at the school site council meeting, could they look at, like, community engagement activities, like activism and volunteering? How do you, School Board, feel about increasing someone's grade based on that? I kind of felt that it has nothing to do with math and volunteering. Maybe it might be related to social studies, and that's just my comment. That's like great information. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Larry. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Hello, Dea? Or Daya? Forgive me if I'm mispronouncing.
Buenas noches. Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Dejanira Calorano. Soy una madre de un estudiante en la escuela Everett, y estoy aquí para pedir, solicitar, la intervención urgente en nuestra escuela y recursos de ayuda para los estudiantes afroamericanos y latinos. La violencia y el comportamiento, el problema de comportamiento están aumentando gravemente. Los profesores le están renunciando. No tenemos suficiente personal para supervisión de los estudiantes, tampoco programas de intervención para ayuda a estos estudiantes. Por favor, les pido que nos ayuden, que ayuden a nuestra escuela y que ayuden a los estudiantes afroamericanos y latinos. Gracias.
Hello, my name is Dejanira, and I'm here to talk about my son attends Everett, and I went here to advocate for our African-American students as well as for our Latino students. In our school, there have been a lot of problems with the way that the students are behaving, and we're lacking staff to take care of this, and also interventionists to help us out through our campus. And so I'm here to ask you to, please send us more staff so we can tackle these problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Chris?
Hi, Johnson, can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
This is Chris Class. I'm a special education teacher at Washington High School, and I'm calling in because I'm extremely concerned about the way that things were handled at last night's curriculum and instruction meeting. The fact that the co-authors of the resolution that was presented on literacy were completely disregarded, not allowed to speak on their own resolution, after being told that they would be on the schedule to speak, shows the amount of collaboration that apparently SFUSD's central staff is capable of. It was a backstabbing move. It was incredibly disrespectful to educators, and it makes me wonder if maybe they've been pulling stuff like this for quite some time, making things that were important take longer than necessary by using these underhanded tactics to avoid answering questions that need to be answered truthfully. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hello, Joe? So, is Joe D.?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Joe Demento. I'm a parent of a second grader at Glen Park Elementary, calling about the budget balancing plan and proposed alternative budgeting plan. And I, as a parent, I'm really worried about the budget cuts that the district needs.
Oh, apologies, sir. This item is on the agenda this evening, so later on you'll have the opportunity to speak on it.
Great, do you know what time that will be?
What, an approximation of an hour or so?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Supriya?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. This is Supriya Ray calling. I'm calling about a couple of issues tonight. I wanted to speak briefly to procedural concerns that I have. Most of the time, I speak on outdoor learning, but I wanted to comment tonight on procedural issues because I've seen these sorts of things come up, and it's troubling to me. So, there have been a lot of irregularities in the past year or so. I would really like to see the numbers of people at the meeting being put up, and being able to see commissioners more clearly would be very helpful. Typically, we can only see, you know, one or two people, including the sign language interpreter, and it's very hard to actually see who's talking and what they're saying. Second of all, I'd like to ask about the Board looking into election activities and making sure that the election activities policy is being enforced. I've heard from folks that there was staff distributing election materials onsite. This is just a basic, fundamental thing that people should know that they're not allowed to do for various ethics reasons, and we should be following the rules. Because good governance and transparency are important. And finally, with regard to outdoor education, I'd like to briefly say, please, please urge the district to get a working group going, and let us, as parents, help. We want to help get outdoor education, outdoor learning, use of outdoor space to as many students as possible. We are ready with all kinds of ideas and resources and even design concepts for what people could do outside. Please accept our help. Thank you.
Hello, Stephanie?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I am a current ECSF pharmacy student, and I'm attending this meeting with a few of my colleagues, and we just wanted to check in on a bill that was recently passed. It's called the Mentally Equality for All Act of 2021. We were just wondering and checking in to see with what San Francisco USD was doing to implement this act, and if you guys have plans for a sustainable model. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Olga?
Si, bueno?
Si.
Oh, hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Olga Reyes. Soy madre de dos miñizos en la miroles school de Everett. Estoy aquí porque quiero pedir a la junta directiva que si nos pueden ayudar en nuestra escuela. Estamos teniendo problemas de violencia y estamos teniendo necesidad de maestros. Ya hoy es el segundo día que mis hijos han dicho que no llegan los maestros, entonces no tenemos recursos. Necesitamos que, por favor, como directores que están ahí, pongan atención a la escuela Everett, porque realmente sí, los padres que hablamos español, especialmente también los recién llegados, no nos sentimos escuchados. También necesitamos un director que hable español. Nuestra directiva no habla español, entonces eso crea un poco de problema en la comunicación de la escuela con los maestros. Gracias.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Olga Reyes. I have twins at Everett, and I would like to get some help because school is having violence or problems with violence, and we need more teachers. Also, we need more resources, and I would like that you, as the Board of Education, pay attention to what is going on at Everett. And as a Latino parent, we feel that we haven't been heard, and we need a principal who speaks Spanish, and also we need more members that speak Spanish at school. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hello, Randy?
Hi, I am just calling in response to one of the public comments regarding being able to see the board members and the sign language interpreter. I would actually just advocate to keep things as they are. I think it's really important for the person that is doing sign language interpretation to be prominent on the screen. We have a lot of hard-of-hearing deaf parents, family members who might be watching this on their iPhones, so I think it's really just important to maintain the current visual display. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hello, Nadia?
Hi. I'm a student at Burton High School, and I wanted to talk about the ROTC program.
Okay, go ahead.
Um...
Why are you... Why do you do ROTC?
I've been doing ROTC for three years now, and I'm hoping to do my fourth year of... I'm a junior, and... I learned a lot from the ROTC program. I stayed at Burton for the ROTC program. It's an hour away from home, and that's the only reason why I come to Burton. So, if the ROTC program gets cut, what am I going to do? Just go to a different school and start all over? And I learned a lot from it. What other program teaches us discipline and stuff like that? We do community service, and I know any other student, like, we get the option to, like, to do community service and stuff like that, and I know any other program is not going to be able to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Norma?
Hello.
Yes?
Hi, I'm a student at Burton High School, and I would like to talk about the ROTC program. Um, for me, ROTC is really important because it gives me a lot of structure, and the people in ROTC are kind of like my family, to be honest. And I feel like if I didn't have ROTC, I would still kind of not feel accepted at my school and stuff like that. So, I feel like if ROTC ends, it would be really hard on me and on a lot of students who are in ROTC.
Thank you. Hello, Maria?
Yes, I just wondered if you have some sort of transcript or backup for the things that are said, because when the Spanish speaker was speaking, she also mentioned that staff are not showing up, that teachers aren't showing up, and I don't think that got translated in English. So, I don't attend these meetings often, so I don't know what kind of support you have, you know, for capturing things that... I know it's really hard to translate, but that was said, and I think that's a significant point. support you have, you know, for capturing things that, I know it's really hard to translate, but that was said and I think that's a significant point.
Thank you. President Lopez, that concludes the public comment on this item.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Section D Advisory Committee Reports and Appointments. Item one, Appointment of Members to the Childcare Planning and Advisory Council, CPAC. May I hear a motion and a second for approval of the CPAC members? So, second. And I'd like to call on Superintendent Matthews to introduce the recommendation to the record.
Introducing this recommendation will be our Chief of Early Education, Minu Yashar.
Thank you, Dr. Matthews. Yeah, so recommended action is to confirm the appointment to the Childcare Planning and Advisory Council, CPAC, of two members, Rosario Viasana to a discretionary seat and Owen Velez to the consumer seat to serve a three-year term upon appointment. And I will give a brief context and background to what CPAC is. It is the Childcare Planning and Advisory Council, which is mandated under Education Code 8499.3 to assess all aspects of local early care and education, including supply and demand, and to set priorities for determining state and local spending to meet existing needs. CPAC analyzes all childcare options, including subsidized and unsubsidized, state contracted and private, large centers, small family home, licensed exempt care, infant toddler, and aftercare to determine the needs of children and families in San Francisco. According to the state mandated and corresponding local ordinance, the Board of Education is the appointing body for half of the CPAC membership. CPAC's membership terms are for three years and the option for one additional consecutive term, should it be deemed appropriate. The recommendations include childcare consumers, childcare providers, community members, public agency representatives, and discretionary early education experts. That will stop there. Thank you.
Hi, can we check for public comment before we hear from the board?
Thank you, President Lopez. Please raise your hands if you care to speak to the CPAC appointments. Can that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please?
Buenas tardes, por favor levante su mano si les añade un comentario público con relación al CPAC. Gracias. If you want to comment on the CPAC, please say something.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm seeing one hand. Hello, Dorian.
Hello. I'm a student at Burton High School and I've been in the NJROTC program for all four.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Dorian. This comment time is only for a specific item. It's the CPAC appointment. So I'm wondering if you can speak at a different point, a time on this item. During the budget discussion, be appropriate. Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Okay, any questions or comments from student delegates or commissioners about the two appointments? Commissioner Collins?
I just had a question. It says we appoint half. I was wondering who else, what's the other governing body that appoints? And whether they were, I've never seen them report to the board. I'm just wondering who they report to or where, you know, they share their advisory input.
Thank you, Commissioner Collins. Yeah, they, there are also representatives from various districts supervisors that also appoint. It's a cross, it's a, it's a sort of a cross collaborative team of San Francisco providers. So a few seats from our school district and there are representatives that sit on that as well as folks that are coming from the mayor's office and various supervisors from different districts also recommend.
Do they make presentations to a governing body in the city?
Um, they can, but they're officially sort of an oversight and there is sort of a govern, they are a governing body in themselves. But, you know, they, they can. I don't necessarily, you know, know if they have recently, but they certainly can.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions or comments, let's do a roll call vote on the motion. Student delegate Lam?
Yes.
Student delegate Liang?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lam?
Yes.
Commissioner Maliga?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
And President Lopez?
Yes.
Seven ice. Item two, under Section D, Report from the Parent Advisory Council. Ca, I'd like to call on Michelle Jacmanegas.
Thank you, President Lopez. Good evening, everyone, commissioners, student delegates, staff, Superintendent Matthews, and our students' families and members of the community. My name is Michelle Jacmanegas and I'm the coordinator for the Parent Advisory Council to the San Francisco Board of Education, also known as the PAC. I am joined this evening by PAC members, Firea McCandless and Selena Chu, who will further introduce themselves as they present. For those who may not know, the primary role of the Parent Advisory Council is to represent parent perspectives in order to inform Board of Education policy discussions and decisions. This is our report for the December 14th, 2021 Board of Education meeting. The PAC would first like to take this opportunity to honor and appreciate all of the hard work that everyone is doing to try to resolve our district's budget crisis, to support and educate our students, to support our families in understanding and having a voice in district-level decisions, and to advocate for positive change. We see you and we thank you. We also want to wish everyone a healthy and joyous winter holiday season in whatever ways you and your family celebrate. The PAC is thrilled that Resolution 2111-9A1 in support of equitable representation and services for two-spirit, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, intersex, asexual parents and families and the creation of a queer, transgender Parent Advisory Council, or QT PAC, was approved to move forward with a positive recommendation at yesterday's Curriculum and Program Committee meeting. We believe that this is an important step in including and supporting the voices of all families in SFUSD and we look forward to the QT PAC's official formation and to supporting and collaborating with this new group of parent leaders. We also offer up our, ourselves to conversations about what that might look like in terms of formation. We're happy to support that process. One way that the PAC collaborates with other district family advisory groups is through regular, excuse me, regular advisory alignment meetings. Our last meeting was Friday, December 10th, when we discussed Inclusive Schools Week activities. Thank you, Dr. Matthews, for that shout out. The Elementary Student Assignment Advisory Committee, which is being formed, a petition to increase state-level funding for public education, which we know we desperately need, and efforts to support family engagement in the district's budget planning processes and its school sites via school site councils, as well as the search for a new superintendent for SFUSD, in which the advisory groups hope to be able to have meaningful participation. And this means including at times that are accessible for our families and our parent leaders, you know, before nine, after five, et cetera. And now I'll turn it over to Selena Chu to introduce herself and carry on the report. Selena, you're muted.
Thank you, Michelle. Sorry. Hi, my name is Selena Chu. I'm a PAC member currently holding, sitting as a co-vice chair for the PAC. And I'm, I do have two kids currently attending SFUSD. And thank you, Michelle, for the information. I'll continue with additional informations. So the PAC held our regular monthly meeting on Thursday, December 2nd. We were joined by Michael Reimer, Program Administrator for SFUSD's state and federal programs, who provided us with an overview of his role and his responsibilities of the state and federal department and guided us through a mandated review of the Board Policy 6020 regarding parent involvement in, in district and school decisions. We also discussed this year's priorities for the PAC, including funding the successful reintegration to in-person learning for all students, including those who are participating in the district's continued distance learning options and equity, including the recruitment of new PAC members. Our discussion of funding included a summary of the November 30th of 2021 Budget Balancing Town Hall Meeting and other opportunities to engage in this matter. Speaking of the budget, we know this is at the forefront of everyone's minds right now and it is a key part of the work that the PAC is engaged in this year. The PAC has been working closely with parents for public schools, SFUSD staff, and other community partners to conduct different events to engage families, community members, and other stakeholders. Here is the summary of events that have been held so far and what we have heard from families and the community. To get things started, a survey was released on November 18th, 2021 and is assessed as well on the SFUSD website. To date, we have received 58 responses, most of them in English. Parents, family members make up half of the responders, respondents. 10% are students, 17% are educator, 20% work for community-based organizations, with many identifying in multiple categories. Thirty-one different school sites were represented, as well as 16 different ZIPcos. 17% of the respondents have a student who is an English learn, language learner. 19% a student with IEP or Individualized Education Plan. And 19% qualify for this district's free and reduced meal plan, meal program. So Firea is gonna go into events to date. Thank you.
Thanks, Selena. Good evening. My name is Firea McCandless. I'm a PAC member and a parliamentarian. I have a fourth grader in SFUSD. So to start our events to date, on November 30th, SFUSD Parents for Public Schools, or PPS, and the PAC held a Budget Balancing Town Hall, a total of 260 participants logged on and there were over 100 questions and suggestions submitted via the chat, some of which were able, they were able to answer live and others that are able to use to update a frequently asked questions or FAQ on the district website. On December 3rd, mission graduates hosted a Facebook Live presentation on the budget in Spanish with 198 participants. The video reached a total of 433 via Facebook and YouTube and there were 88 engagements via questions and comments. And on December 8th, the SF Beacon Initiative hosted a community partners forum with over 100 participants representing SFUSD partner organizations, serving students and families in SFUSD. Miranda Martin of PPS and PAC Coordinator Michelle Jacmanegas reported on the budget balancing plan and process to date, shared the survey and collected questions, which will be used to continue to inform the FAQ and next steps. And on December 9th, PPS and individual PAC members attended a Close the Gap Coalition meeting. The coalition is composed of parent leaders, educators, and community advocates. Jerry Almansa, Treasurer for the United Educators of San Francisco, presented summaries of the two different proposed plans to balance the budget that were presented at the December 7th, 2021 Special Meeting of the Board of Education. The dozen or so attendees expressed concerns about how we go through this process and still keep the promises we have made to and meet the needs of our focal students and continue to provide services to our newcomer English language learning and non-English speaking students and families. Challenges and hopes shared included making stronger connections to our out-of-school time programs, adopting a more preventative philosophy, and advocating for the schools and educational experience that we know our students need. We appreciate the coalition for including us and for the opportunity to hear from coalition members. As the district moves forward with submitting a budget balancing plan to the California Department of Education and we await the governor's proposed budget in January, we encourage families to get involved with the school site council at their child's school. The school site council, or SSC, is the governing body for the school, composed half of school staff and half of parents, and is responsible for determining the school plan for student achievement, as well as the budget. SSC meetings are open to everyone in the school community and should be held at a time that enables family participation. SSCs also plan school community engagement events where all families have the opportunity to learn about and provide input on the school plan and budget before it is submitted in the spring. The PAC is working with PPS and other family advisory groups to plan some informational and training sessions on SSC participation and best practices in the coming months. Information will be shared as it is available. Now over, back to Selena.
Thank you, Firea. So the information on the budget balancing, including links to previous presentations at Board of Education meetings, recording of the town hall, copies of the slide deck in Spanish and Chinese, and a link to the survey, which is still open, can be found at www.sfusd.edu/2021budgetbalancing. So we encourage everyone to participate in the many opportunities to engage, learn, and provide feedback on the assignment process and other issues like the budget by attending these events and others that will be announced soon and over the course of the school year. Attending a PAC meeting is a good way to, to be involved and to get idea of what we do. Our next meeting will be held from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Thursday, January 6th, 2022 via Zoom. PAC meetings are open to the public. All are welcome to attend and we encourage anyone who is interested to join us. Meetings are conducted in English with closed captioning. Translation and interpretation can be provided with events notice. So meeting information can be found at sfusd.edu/pac. Agendas, Zoom links, and information on how to dial in via phone are posted at least 72 hours prior to the meeting. If you are interested in attending a PAC meeting or would like to partner with the PAC or have any questions or comments about this report or the PAC's work in general, please contact us at email pac@sfusd.edu. Thank you. And Firea is gonna continue with more on our, about our report. Thank you.
Before we conclude our report, the PAC would like to affirm our support for several items that appear later in this evening's agenda. Board Policy 5023 in support of translation and interpretation services to serve families so that they can fully participate in their children's education and engage in school and district-level meetings and decision-making processes. The continuation of a virtual component to Board of Education meetings as this allows for greater flexibility and access for families, including but not limited to the volunteer parent leaders who serve on all of the district's family advisory groups, as well as the many actively engaged families who are not currently serving in an official capacity. The PAC views these items as issues of access, equity, and social justice. And the asks included in the SAC's report this evening and Resolution 2110-26A1 regarding regarding the alignment of the Student Advisory Council and the Board of Education Office. We believe that the students have made a good case for this change. We support them in their efforts to continue to advocate for what they believe is in their own best interest and in the best interest of democracy and student representation. And we ask that you listen to what they are saying, including and especially in regards to sexual harassment. We thank you for this opportunity, and we welcome any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you to our Parent Advisory Council for your presentation. I'd like to open it up for public comment before we begin our discussion.
Thank you. Please raise your hand if you care to speak to the Parent Advisory Council presentation. Can that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please?
Buenas noches. Por favor, levante su mano si desea añadir un comentario público. Gracias.
You're allowed to, if you want to, to raise your hand if you have any comments or thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing four hands, President Lopez. Hello, Larry.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Thank you. Hi, this is Larry Lee. This question is for the Parent Advisory Council. And the Parent Advisory Council has issues or comments that are important to them. How serious does the San Francisco Board of Education and San Francisco Unified School District take when you have an issue or comment seriously? I mean, from your experience. I mean, especially pertaining to, like, violence at school sites or, you know, budgetary issues. That's basically just my comments, and I don't want to say more to drown out the message I have. Okay? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Hello, Dea.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Dejanira Calahorra, y estoy madre de la escuela Everett. Mi pregunta para los padres del PAC es cómo ustedes se comunican con los padres. En este caso, los padres latinos, sí, los estudiantes latinos y afroamericanos de la escuela Everett están prácticamente sufriendo mucho abandono del distrito escolar. No nos escuchan la directiva de la escuela. Tenemos muchos problemas de violencia. ¿Cómo ustedes se comunican para que las familias sean escuchadas? Escucho que ustedes abogan por acceso, equidad, y justicia social. Pero, ¿cómo están conectándose con los latinos y los afroamericanos? Que son quienes más sufren de estos problemas de falta de justicia, acceso, y equidad.
Hi, my name is Dejanira Calahorra, and I have a son at Everett. So I wanted to ask the Parent Advisory Council, how do you actually communicate with our African-American students and our Latino students? As you might know, our school is having a lot of issues with violence. And specifically with the people that, for example, with the Spanish-speaking families, how do you really communicate with them? You know, and I know that you guys advocate for equity, social justice. And I know that a lot of these African-American students and Latino students are lacking that. And so, how do you guys do to communicate with these parents and their students?
Thank you. Hello, Olga? Olga, are you there?
Okay, yeah. Tengo la misma pregunta que la señora Dejanira. Mi nombre es Olga Reyes, y nosotros llevamos... Acaba de empezar mis hijos del sexto grado, y yo no he escuchado de ustedes en la escuela. Yo intenté entrar al SSC, pero no tuve mucha respuesta. La directora me dijo que no había mucho espacio, o había otros padres. Porque yo estuve involucrada en el SSC de mi escuela anterior, pero en este sexto grado sí realmente ha sido un poco difícil porque mis hijos no tienen maestros, entonces van a terminar este trimestre sin maestros, y eso es algo realmente preocupante porque es una falta de... están perdiendo, este, lo que aprende. Entonces, mi pregunta es cómo ustedes nos están apoyando ahí, porque yo realmente no los he visto. Gracias.
I have the same question that Ms. Dejanira had. My name is Olga Reyes, and I have two kids on sixth grade. And I haven't heard from you. And I have been at the SSC before, and I was very involved in the SSC. And my kids don't have teachers. And they're losing academic learning. So I was wondering how you can help us. And again, I haven't seen you. I haven't seen this organization at school. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Alita.
Hello, everyone. On behalf of the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education, I would like to thank the PAC for yet another amazing and collaborative report, as well as the wonderful work that they do in community and all the time spent on educating families. And I have to say, the previous two commenters really highlight the need for more work, like the work that's being done at the PAC, for more support of the family engagement networks for the parent advisory committees. And especially as we move forward and tying our budget to our priorities and our values. The work that the PAC does in making sure that families are engaged not only needs to continue but be expanded. So thank you for everyone doing the work. We look forward, we at the CAC look forward to continuing to work alongside you.
Thank you. Hello, Josephine.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, PAC, for your great work. Michelle, Selena, Amy, Michelle. Thank you for the work for including our community. And I also wanted to congratulate the Two-Spirit LGBTQ PAC for being formed and approved. And I also wish that CPAC, the Chinese Parent Advisory Council, can be a part of the district someday. I would like to also concur with two parents three speakers ago that there are incidences of bullying and violence that happened to many of our community members' children in schools. Please look into that as well. And also, how do you deal with AAPI hate that's rampant in our community now? Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Anna.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Malo y lele. My name is Ana Mahina, Chair of the PAC and the Matua Advisory Council, or the NHPR PAC. I would like to say that amazing job that Michelle has done. Fira and Selena, welcome tonight. The PAC has done amazing work in inclusive work for all of our communities. And on behalf of the Matua Advisory Council, I would like to say thank you for reaching out to our parents in all of the advisory alignments and including everything. Thank you. Malo habito.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions or comments from the Board or student delegates on this item? Seeing none. Thank you again for your presentation, and we look forward to the next report.
Thank you, President Lopez. And I know that we can't respond directly to folks, but I would just like to generally say that if people have questions and would like to know more, would like to have conversations, please, please reach out to us. My email is pac@sfusd.edu. And I would just like to say that the PAC can't do it all, and we certainly don't do it alone. And we do this work in partnership, as you heard mentioned before, with all of the other district advisories, as well as with other community partners and organizations of families that are not officially under the district. And we look forward to continuing to do that and figuring out how we can better reach and hear from all of our families in the district. So thank you to everyone who called in tonight.
Thank you. I actually know. There's one comment from Commissioner Lam before you go.
I just wanted to say a big thank you to Michelle and PAC for all the work in putting together our community budget town halls. I know that it is not easy, and the amount of partnership and intentionality and having very successful engagement of community and parents really helped shape the conversations we've been having as a board for the last several months. And, you know, when you interpret or really break down very complex topics and issues like a district's budget and public education and how it's funded to making it accessible means a great deal, and I look forward to that continued partnership. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Last item under Section D. I'd like to see if there are any advisory committee appointments.
I have one. Thank you. I want to reappoint Alita Fisher to the Charter School Committee.
Okay, thank you. That'll be noted. Section E, Consent Calendar. I need a motion and a second on the consent calendar.
So moved.
Let's see if there are any public comment on consent items.
Please raise your hand if you care to speak to any items that are on the consent calendar. Can that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please?
Buenas noches. Por favor, levante su mano si desea añadir un comentario público. Cualquiera que este sea. Gracias.
You're allowed to, if you want to, to raise your hand if you have any comments or thoughts.
Thank you. Thank you. Seeing none.
Any items withdrawn or corrected by the superintendent?
None. President Lopez?
Any items removed for first reading by the Board? Seeing none. Any items severed by the Board or Superintendent for discussion and vote tonight? Seeing none. Let's do a roll call vote on consent calendar. Student Delegate Lam?
Yes.
Student Delegate Liang?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lam?
Yes.
Vice President Maliga?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
And President Lopez?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Nine eyes.
Section F, Discussion and Vote on Consent Calendar Resolution Severed for Separate Consideration. There are none tonight. Section G, Proposals for Action. Item one. Urging the SFUSD Board of Education to support the alignment of the Student Advisory Council and the Board of Education Office. One, requesting the Superintendent to relocate the Student Advisory Council under the Board of Education Office. And two, requesting that the Student Delegates and Student Advisory Council Cabinet have input in hiring any staff members who are assigned to support the Student Advisory Council, introduced by Student Delegates Joanna Lam and Agnes Liang and Commissioner Matt Alexander. This was moved and seconded on October 26th and is now before the Board for action. Can I call on our Student Delegates and Commissioner Alexander to share comments on the resolution?
So as the two items on Board Doc says, this resolution is mostly to move the Student Advisory Council under the Board of Education Office and give Student Advisory Council members say in the hiring of any staff that are assigned to support the Student Advisory Council. We believe that this would allow us to increase student voice. It would give us a lot more autonomy as students. And I think we've displayed that in our ability to write resolutions as students and bring them to the Board. And we hope to continue being a policymaking body under the Board of Education Office. Agnes, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I think that basically sums up what I was thinking. But yeah, I think promoting student voice through this resolution, but also really bridging the gap between students and the Board, I think is really important as well. I feel like we really want to elevate student voice, especially this year for our term.
And I'll just say, it's an honor to be sponsoring this on behalf of our students. They wrote it. They... Actually, it started last spring, right? With the previous year's Student Advisory Council. It's been revised and updated by this year's Student Advisory Council and Student Delegates. And I'm just happy to support that process, but it was all their work.
Okay, let's check for public comment on this item.
Please raise your hand if you care to speak to the resolution that was just read in, the Student Advisory Council moving to the Board Office. Please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese.
Buenas noches. Por favor, levante su mano si desea añadir un comentario público con relación a esta resolución. Gracias.
You're allowed to, if you want to, to raise your hand if you have any comments or thoughts. Go to the Education Board of Education. Excuse me. Board of Education, you have a question. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing one. Alita?
Hello, everyone. On behalf of the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education, one of the family advisory committees that is all about participation and engagement advocacy. We are so excited to see the work of the Student Advisory Committee. We are so excited to see their advocacy and look forward to working alongside them. Thank you so much, student commissioners, for writing this resolution. The CAC hopes this passes. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay. Any questions or comments from student delegates or commissioners? Commissioner Bogus?
Thank you. I was interested if staff had any idea if there was any costs related to this resolution and kind of if there was any fiscal impact that's kind of connected with kind of what's being recommended here.
Hello, Commissioner Bogus. I can answer that if that's all right. President Lopez?
Yes, thank you.
All right. No, there shouldn't be the Student Advisory Council is currently funded. It has a small budget, but that budget will move over to the Board Office along if this resolution passes. The funding that is part of the Student Advisory Council will move with the Student Advisory Council. So there shouldn't be any budget implications.
Thank you. I guess I just had another question in the same vein around staffing and just kind of how that will kind of be overseen and seen in this new model? And will that kind of fall to the President of the Board to kind of oversee and support it? Is there kind of a different supervision structure for staff kind of in relation to this shift?
I don't think that all of the details have been worked out. I don't believe... I think there will be a connection with the President of the Board, but I don't believe the President would be supervising the program. And there would be staff support for the Student Advisory Council as there is now. So the staff support would remain. And that staff support would be part of the Board Office, I believe. But I do think there will be some conversations about how to operationalize the resolution, and those will be coming up if the resolution does pass. And of course, the Student Delegate And of course, the student delegates will be part of those conversations as well.
As far as things still needing to be worked out, would that, the same be true as finding out, kind of defining what the the input regarding hiring means? Or is that already something that has been kind of clearly defined?
I think with respect to the hiring, we probably would follow the same models. Like, there are, students are on a lot of other hiring panels. At the high school level, students can be part of the hiring panel for principals or assistant principals. I know in my division, we also have students part of the hiring panel. So I think we would follow the same, those same processes that we already have in place for having students involved in hiring decisions.
Commissioner Bogus, if this resolution passes, the Student Advisory Council Coordinator will be reporting to the Board Office, which is, which I'm overseeing right now. So I will be doing the hiring along. Again, if this resolution passes, I will be doing the hiring along and be supporting the students with their input as well, once the new year comes.
Thank you for that clarity. And I guess my last question, sorry for having so many questions, is just, are there any legal concerns? Not necessarily to kind of like the shift to this structure, but to like how we interact, oversee, kind of hold people accountable and things of that nature in relationship to this body? Or is there no concerns like that?
Sorry, Commissioner Bogus, just so I can understand your question. Do you mean in terms of moving the the students to the Board Office? Does that move present supervision concerns?
Yeah, I guess like I'm worried like in a worst case scenario where like we want to put someone in the staff position who like wants to like silence student voice or something to like that effect? Like, is there anything of that nature that we need to be kind of more aware of with us kind of being overseeing kind of this other body? Or is that not really something we'd have to worry about as much?
I don't see that as a concern because the position that will be supporting the Student Advisory Council will continue to report to the Board Office, who reports to the superintendent. So there will still be accountability for, you know, conduct and performance that doesn't meet the Board's expectations. Okay, seeing no other comments, let's do a roll call vote on the resolution. Student delegate Lam?
Yes.
Student delegate Liang?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lam?
Yes.
Vice President Maliga?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
And President Lopez?
Yes.
Seven eyes. Cool. Congratulations. Section H, special order of business. I will be calling items one and two together. Item one, fiscal year 2022, '23, and 2023, '24 budget balancing plan. Special Order 2112-14S02. And item two, proposed alternative budget balancing plan sponsored by Commissioner Alexander, I need a motion and a second on special order two and special order three. So moved. Superintendent Matthews, can you introduce the designees who will be sharing information about these special orders?
Thank you, President Lopez. Good evening, everyone, once again. Before I call on our Chief Financial Officer, Megan Wallace, I'd just like to thank staff for their work on this item. I want to make sure that the community knows that this is the superintendent's proposal. So it is my proposal, and I work with staff on making this happen. We do our best to work within the means that we have to put a budget together. But it's my recommendation. I'm the one who works with staff. But at the end of the day, I have the final call on what proposal our budget is going to be presented to the Board. And I want to make sure the public knows that if you want to blame anyone, staff is working with me, but it's my proposal. So I just want to make sure you are aware of that. I also want to thank, we know we have an alternative budget balancing plan. I want to thank Commissioner Alexander. Over the last few weeks, we've been working together to come together to figure out a way forward. And after Chief Officer Wallace presents, Deputy Superintendent Lee's going to speak. And then I'm going to actually ask Commissioner Alexander to also speak. So right now, we're going to have Chief Financial Officer Megan Wallace talk a bit about some of the changes that have occurred or what's occurred over time. And then it will be turned over to Deputy Superintendent Lee.
Thank you, Dr. Matthews. Good evening to the Board of Education, to the public. If I may have the presentation, please. So tonight, I'm actually just going to, we're going to have a very brief presentation. Limited number of slides. It's been a long road. And there are just a few things that we want to recap as we take this final step. And maybe just as the slides are coming up, I'll just start by saying that the intention of this presentation is just to provide a brief overview of our budget balancing process and the timeline that we followed, as well as some of the details around the balancing plan and next steps. So on the next slide, I just want to take a step back and look at the fact that we started this process back in September. It's been a while since we've been talking about facing a structural budget deficit as a district. But really, the deep, hard work began in September when we first received a letter from the California Department of Education calling for San Francisco Unified School District and our County Office of Education to develop a budget balancing plan that addresses our projected deficits for fiscal years 2022, '23, and '23, '24. So we've carried forward that work with a vision for, and a vision for meeting that mandate by developing a balancing plan that preserves the fundamental functions and equitably supports students and families while ensuring a sustainable financial future for our district. This has been a very short timeline. Now, here we are finally in December. But we have been working tirelessly to engage our families and our community on this effort. On the next slide, just want to remind everybody that since the beginning of November, we held six public meetings, really rolling out the details of the plan. And there's first three meetings and then gathering feedback from the Board and the public over the last three meetings, including our budget town hall. And here we are tonight with our final proposal and a request to the Board of Education to adopt this balancing plan, which is critical for filling the deficits identified in our 2021, '22 first interim report. On the next slide, I just want to highlight that overall, we use multiple lenses to develop the balancing plan that ultimately includes $90 million of detailed expenditure reductions. I do want to refer the Board and the public to the balancing plan, which is attached to the item on board docs. And it does include $90 million of reductions, including $50 million to school sites for our weighted student formula and multi-tiered systems of support, direct services, indirect services, operations, and administration, as well as $35 million of funding sources. On the next slide, I actually want to introduce our fiscal expert, Mr. Duchamp, who is going to briefly share his recommendations.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Thank you. It's been a pleasure. Pam was on, and I were both appointed by the California Department of Education to serve as fiscal experts for San Francisco Unified School District. In its status, and it's a little confusing. It's what's called not a going concern, which means the district may or may not be able to meet its fiscal obligations for the next three years. Staff during this time have worked closely with us, provided many, many documents to us, and we've gone through all of them. There's lots of detail, lots of information. And staff has worked very hard to come up with this budget stabilization plan, as well as a multi-year projection included in the interim report, which we believe will satisfy the Department of Education to, at least to the road to restore the district to becoming a going concern. The recommendation I want to focus on tonight is two parts. It's number one, to approve the budget stabilization plan as presented with, with, by the staff. Along with that, as a subpart, is the interim report, which also needs to be presented and both need to be delivered to the Department of Education tomorrow. We think that it's very critical to align staffing at all levels with student enrollment. And that means from the school site through the district office. Freeze nonessential hiring, freeze nonessential spending. Review site-level vendor contracts. And go, go along and utilize Prop G and ERF forgiveness funds to offset long-term OPEP obligations, which are your retirement obligations for those people who, like me, get acronym confusion and develop a plan for managing those obligations over time. This is step one. It is not the end of the road. It is the beginning of the road to recovery. Again, Pam and I have a strong recommendation to approve the budget stabilization plan and approve the interim report as put together by staff and reported, deliver it to the Department of Education. And I want to thank everybody. Dr. Matthews' office has been extremely helpful. I think I have met or talked with each one of the commissioners. I want to thank each of you for your commitment and hard work. I, I can attest to the fact that all of you have put in hours and hours and hours from staff to commissioner to superintendent. So thank you for your commitment to the children. And I think it's essential that you, as a district, move through this first step and continue to the rest of the process for long-term budget stabilization. So thank you. It's been a pleasure. And will be a continuing pleasure to work with San Francisco.
Thank you, Elliot. We'll go to the next slide. So this, this particular slide is a follow-up on a request to get into the details of the anticipated impacts of the balancing plan proposal on two programs in particular, AVID and Peer Resources. AVID is a P-funded program, and it is a program that has seen reductions over time. So the program currently serves fewer students than it, than it did in the past. And although the current proposal does, would eliminate the funding for AVID in '22, '23, staff is evaluating the Educator Effectiveness Block Grant Title II and possible state budget improvements to restore proposed reductions so that we can continue AVID programming across the district. Peer Resources is funded by the Unrestricted General Fund. And the central, and so the central portion of the funding is part of our balancing plan, our proposed reductions to direct services. And should we move forward with that approach, it would mean that sites would need to fully fund Peer Resources teachers with weighted student formula allocations. Schools currently receive a mix of allocations between .25 STE and 1.0. So some sites already use at least a portion of their weighted student formula allocations to support Peer Resources. But obviously, that would change with, with this proposal. And the impact would vary site to site. A reduced allocation is not a guarantee that the program will be eliminated, but it does mean that it changes the dynamic and it changes what having a Peer Resources program might look like at a school. This could mean that fewer sections are offered. It could mean that teachers may not have additional prep periods in addition to those that are typical for, you know, for a middle or high school teacher. It could also mean that in some cases, Peer Resources class sizes are larger depending on the number of students that are currently enrolled at any particular school. But we can certainly discuss the details, if so desired, during the discussion. But really just wanted to share a little bit of additional information to support some of the requests we received since last week's meeting. We'll go ahead and conclude the presentation on the next slide. And Deputy Superintendent Young Lee will be speaking.
Thank you, Anne Marie, and thank you, colleagues. And good evening, commissioners and student delegates. So I have the last slide. Thank you. And I want to say this is the most encouraging of the, of the information that we're going to share tonight. And I'm glad I get to speak to this. So as we've said many times throughout the many meetings, this is an important milestone, but not the last milestone in this process for planning for next fiscal year. And after tonight's meeting, after tonight's action, just wanted to highlight a few particular things that will happen in the near future. One is that beginning, well, it's already begun, but through January, we are committed to continuing to explore patterns of central budgets, centrally budgeted investments. You know, that's been a topic of great interest for commissioners and the, and our community. We are about a month away from having the governor release his proposed budget for next fiscal year for '22, '23. We'll just restate that we are very hopeful that that will map to improvements in our revenue projections. And we will be updating the Board and all of our community on our revised fiscal outlook during the latter half of January. In February, we will report back to the Board on school allocations for next year, WSF and MTSS, sorry, weighted student formula and multi-tiered systems of support. And then in March, late February, and in February and through early March, we will work on revising and updating the balancing plan for the second interim report. That's the next required submission to the California Department of Education. And then finally, wanted to share that we are continuing to advocate at the state level, especially at the state level, for increased funding. This presentation includes a link to a letter that Dr. Matthews and superintendents in seven other large districts in the state just submitted to the governor this past Friday, outlining our priorities for funding, including increased funding for the local control funding formula, special education funding, support with, with paying for the cost of pensions. So encourage commissioners and our community to look at that letter. And on a closing note, if revenue projections and/or expenditure projections improve, as we hope and expect they will, the highest consideration for funding restoration will be given to direct school site budgets, direct services, including programs like AVID and Peer Resources, which were just described by Ms. Gordon, and central office services that most, most directly support students. So we, I think we have a lot of convergence on, on those being the highest and most important priorities for hopefully new revenues that that come into the picture. And with that, I would like to turn it back to Dr. Matthews.
Just once again, I just want to say how much I appreciate the opportunity that I had the opportunity to talk to many of commissioners about the budget, about questions, about possible solutions, and have had the opportunity to work really closely thus far with Commissioner Alexander. Expect to continue to work very closely. And so I just wanted to turn it over to Commissioner Alexander about the conversations and possibilities going forward.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Matthews and Deputy Superintendent Lee.
Thank you so much, um Superintendent Matthews and Deputy Superintendent Lee and Chief Wallace and Director Gordon. Um, I I'm really, really grateful for the the dialogue and conversations we've had over the last um couple of weeks and um feel like we're making really good progress um on on um starting to address some of the concerns um that have been coming up for a while. Um, and so I'm I'm happy with where we're at in this path forward. I wanted to direct my remarks um mainly actually to the people, the educators, parents, and students who've helped either help develop the core values balancing plan or who've been advocating for it, because I think um it's important for them to understand kind of how we're moving forward. Um, I think, you know, and and I'll say um you all out there who've done that advocacy, you've been the ones who've pushed this conversation. And I think that's the that's what's really, really important. Um, you know, if you're educators in our schools, that our schools were hardly overstaffed before the pandemic and that now students are coming back with incredibly high levels of trauma. And um, you know, that that cutting teachers, parent educators, social workers, counselors, programs like Avid, community schools, all those things would have a devastating effect on our schools. Um, and and you've been telling us that. And I actually, I spoke this weekend. I was at a cookie decorating party this weekend with a number of SFUSD teachers, and people were coming up to me saying, um, if you cut that money from our schools, I'm gonna leave. These were veteran teachers who were saying, I can't work in a school where we cut another ten percent from our budget. So um and that was not me kind of soliciting that. That was people kind of cornering me and saying, that's what that's what we need as as educators. And so um, so I just want to say thank you and to say that um I think you are making your voice heard. Um, and I think, I also just want to say, uh again, I think my colleagues on the board have shared these concerns and have expressed them over time. And I think the, we've talked about this with staff of the instructional spending resolution that we passed in in May really was, it was called the Establishing Classroom Instructional Spending and Other School-Based Spending as a Priority in Light of Offcoming Deficits back in May. So I think we voted for it unanimously. So I think, I just want the folks out there to know that the board has been listening um to these concerns. And I also think our budget team has been working incredibly hard over the past seven months and intensively since September on this. Um, and what I really appreciate about your leadership, Superintendent Matthews, is is being willing to kind of keep in that dialogue and conversation, um even when these conversations are difficult. Um, I feel I feel like where I was at last week that felt really hard was that we were hearing from our uh Mr. Duchan, our our fiscal advisor, that we basically had one option, right? It was that we sort of got to the end of the road. We only have one choice. You basically vote up, vote for this, and if you vote against it, you're voting for a state takeover. And I feel like now we've gotten to a place where, um yes, we can support this, or I'm gonna support it at least. And there's a path forward to be able to say, we can actually make some, potentially make some revisions uh in 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 February. And so to me, that's actually what good collaborative decision-making looks like. And so I'm just, I'm just really excited about that. I mean, I don't, we we can share more moving forward, but I think the superintendent and I have talked about engaging some uh former SFUSD staff, central office staff, perhaps, people who really know the system, some budget experts, some others, to really do a sort of deeper dive into the core values plan uh and provide a sort of independent detailed analysis of what could be possible. Um, and then come back to us in the Budget Committee and the Board in early February to see what adjustments we could make. Um, I would love to see beyond that, uh continuing the conversation in the spring of really engaging in a thoughtful discussion around central office supports. And I want to say again, I mean, I've put out there some some statistics, which are true statistics, and are provocative statistics around the growth of our central office over the last decade. And I just want to be really clear. The people in those jobs are really good people. They're smart people. They're incredibly hardworking. They're incredibly committed. Um, and so it's even hard for, and and some of them are my friends. So I want to say, I know, so when I say, you know, we have too many of these jobs, I want to be very clear. I'm not talking about a critique of any individual. What I'm talking about is that we need to step back collectively and think about our system and say, is this system really the the most effective system for serving our students and our schools? Um, I don't think we're gonna need to cut a lot of uh people, because unfortunately, with the people, the number of people that are leaving the system due to the trauma uh and and the difficulty of the job, I think we're gonna have more resignations than than layoffs. So I think our job is gonna be keeping people and constructing a system that works and putting people in the right roles. Um, and and I think that's the, to me, that's the job that's gonna happen and unfold over the next um six months. And so I'm just, again, really, really grateful for, to the superintendent for um being willing to engage with this um and and really listening. I mean, to sort of hearing that a majority of the board does support the core values plan, hearing that we need to take a close look at the central office structure and that that's what we're hearing from educators and parents and and others. And so um, so I'm just just looking forward to that. Um, and I, and again, to to the educators, to the parents, to the students who've advocated for this. As others have said, this is the beginning, not the end. We actually need you to keep speaking up for our students in our schools. We need you to hold us accountable. We need you to be back here in January and February um telling us, you know, wh- if we come up with some proposals, that some may be good, some may not be so good. We need that that public input and the input, especially from the people that are part of our system. So please keep up your organizing, your leadership. Um, that keep reflecting those SFUSD values, especially being student-centered and fearless. Uh, and just thank you for uh working with us as we as we chart a better course forward and more positive course forward um for SFUSD.
All right. Thank you to our staff and to Commissioner Alexander for sharing that information. Before we begin our discussion, I'd like to open it up to public comment. And Judson, let me know how many speakers you see.
Yes, will do. Please raise your hand if you're prepared to speak to uh the budget balancing plan this evening. And can that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please?
Buenas noches. Por favor, levantes su mano si desea dar un comentario público con relación al presupuesto. Gracias.
Thank you.
Pardon me, uh President Lopez. Could you clarify for members of the public, this is public comment on both uh the staff's budget proposal and Commissioner Alexander's plan?
That's correct. Thank you for clarifying. I am following the process that we did last week at the Committee of the Whole, so it will be for both. Thank you.
Thank you. So there are twenty-four hands so far, President Lopez.
Okay.
Going up slowly.
So we will do a minute each, and for now, I'll keep it at thirty minutes. And we'll just see how many uh items or hands come up.
Good. Hello, Larry.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello. Okay, great. Um, first of all, what I want to say is that um this is for the school board. If you truly care for our kids at all, you will vote for the only state-approved plan and stop the state takeover of our district. If you don't, then the this board is just finso and don't care about our kids and just wants want to get back at parents, because how dare we recall three of your board members? And if you do this, I will remember this and join efforts to eventually recall all seven members of this current board. And also, I would like to thank you, Superintendent Vincent Matthew, and your team for all the hard work, because no one will blame you, Superintendent Vincent Matthew, because your budget balancing plan is very realistic due to our budget crisis. Maybe last week's meeting um was just a Hollywood production show for all our cons- our dear constituents by the Sanchez-Alexander Plan. Thank you. This is very, bye-bye.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Hello, Supriya.
Hi, thanks again for taking my call. This is Supriya Ray calling. I just, I'm calling to express my relief as, if I understood correctly, it appears that Commissioner Alexander is uh now planning to support the staff plan. But I do also want to, you know, want to say how important I think it is that the board act very responsibly here and do as the uh state fiscal expert we've been given has recommended. I personally agree with many of the people who have called for looking at cuts to central office. But it is much too late in the game for us to be doing this with a deadline on our hands right now. We're at the eleventh hour, and so we need to do what's required to make sure that our district remains a going concern. Our district is fundamentally for the students. That's why it exists. We need to make sure that it continues and look at staff cuts to central office and, you know, wherever else it may be needed as we move on, once we have um, you know, once we have a stabilized plan accepted. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Chris.
Hi, Judson. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I hope you can hear everybody out here. We have a rally going on outside of five-five-five fragment. We have hundreds of people out here in the hall, and they are saying, no cuts to school sites. We cannot afford to cut school sites by about ten percent per site. It is already an unsustainable condition at school sites with understaffing and under-resourcing of student services. Chopping from the top, cutting already bloated central office staffing with people who are making hundreds of thousands of dollars, as compared to educators like me making between fifty and eighty thousand a year on average. That's where it makes the most sense to me. Some of the people at central office may have started with great things that they were doing, but our student enrollments have declined over the past five years, and we don't need those positions as much anymore as we need positions at school sites actively working with students and helping them.
Thank you.
Please, save our sites.
Hello, Lita.
Hi, everyone. Um, so on behalf of the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education, thank you um Commissioner Alexander for all your work, um for the collaboration. Excited to see that there's been so much communication behind the scenes and everyone is really working to bring this together. Um, I'd like to call everyone's attention to Slide Eight and the next steps. Um, the CAC and I'm sure other parent advisory committees as well look forward to being, and all all stakeholders look forward to being the part of these continuing, ongoing conversations um where we explore patterns of cuts. Um, as many, many, many speakers have said over the past few months of comments related to the budget, this is outside of the normal timeline. So those of us who would participate, say through LCAP, we look forward to alternate means of participation here instead. And um, you know, so many things that we have to consider when talking about central office staff and direct versus indirect.
Thank you.
All the school site budgets. Thank you. We look forward to furthering the conversation.
Hello, Josephine.
Hi, thanks, Commissioner Alexander, for your leadership. Um, I think it's super important for um our school board to retain local control, even though I do or do not like some of the things that are done, but ha- you having the control is more important than everything else. Uh, we can fix it later. Um, cutting anywhere is not desirable. Cutting central, cutting sites are, none of it is good. Uh, the most important thing right now is to create policies that will reattract families to come back to San Francisco and do things to make sure that our customers are happy and can come back or retain in our school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Gregory.
Hi, thank you, Judson. We've lost thousands of students from SFUSD over the last couple of years. It's not realistic to assume we don't need to cut any staff, both at school sites and the central office after enrollment losses of that size, especially given the size of the unfunded pension and benefit obligations the district has. Even after realigning staffing to reduce size of our student body, we still have one of the best teacher-to-student ratios in the state. Please vote for the staff plan so that SFUSD is not taken over by the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Kamal.
Hi there. Thank you for taking my comment. Um, I want to echo what many parents have said uh and what Gregory and Josephine just said. Please support the staff plan. It is unrealistic that we can't expect cuts in the near future. As much as I don't want them, it's unfortunately the position that we as a district have been put in. And like Gregory just said, we need to reattract students and families to come back in order to bring everything back to the way it used to be. Please, please, please vote for the staff plan and do not allow state takeover. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Sarah.
Hi, my name is Sarah. Um, I just wanted to provide public comment. I mean, first off, as a parent and public school teacher myself, um, I mean, the thought of cuts to my kids' classrooms, like, it actually breaks my heart. I don't really think anyone wants or desires cuts like that. Um, it sounds like from the conversation that there were some really constructive, there was really constructive dialogue between the superintendent um and the board, and I really appreciate that. Um, it was always my hope to avoid state takeover. I think that losing um local control is just too devastating. But I also think and appreciate um the sentiment that we need to continue to have conversations about how to prioritize classrooms and teachers um and students and come up with creative solutions to do so. Um, I uh want to thank the board of the district and the superintendent for making these hard decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Jerry. I'm sorry, Jerry, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, Justin. This is Cassandra on Jerry's phone.
Okay.
Cassandra Curial, president of UEFA. We have had hundreds, hundreds of educators and students out here tonight, family members, kids, all of it. SFUSD is out here, right? And this is because we stand with our values. Our students are are clamoring not to cut the programs to balance this budget based on their backs. Right? JRITC was out here tonight, Peer Resources was out here tonight, all of our educators, substitute and parent educators. We are at the end of a semester that is the hardest on record. We are covering classes and vacancies, and to hear that there is some consideration that a compromise would be addressed by laying off three hundred individuals is not okay. That is not in line with values. And to speak to the enrollment issue, if enrollment needs to be right-sized, it can with any employee. It should not come from school sites. It should not come from educators and programs that students are served from, especially in this time. And when we speak about what's happening at state takeover, that is a year out, and if this plan can be revised in January, then there's no reason why that can't happen then as well. Now, I'm not saying not to pass a plan, but what we are saying is pass a plan that is in line with our values. Our students need each and every individual that is on campus and more than who is showing up right now. And folks have had quite a long time to discuss this, and this should not have come to this point. We are looking to you to lead with your values. We are looking to you to vote to make sure that our students know that their classrooms will be fully staffed through spring and next year. The prospect of layoffs would lay off hundreds of new educators, those of which we might not get back. And that's not including the ones who've left already. Our profession is suffering, our school sites are suffering. And to attract new students by saying all school sites have incurred a ten percent cut is absolutely a ridiculous concept. Ridiculous concept. We are trying our hardest to do what we can with the thread, the bare, threadbare budget we've got. And we're gonna keep doing that. We're gonna show up every single month that this goes on to show up for our students, to show up for all the educators, to make sure that you all are honoring the values that we have on the sweatshirts, that we have at our school sites, and that we instill in our students every day to become the best adults they can be. And that means making hard choices. And here you are before us with a hard choice to make sure that you vote our values and make sure that we have enough staff for the future of SFUSD.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Antegobli, we have um someone for ASL interpretation for public comment. Should I add spotlight?
Sure.
Okay. I'm sorry, Uma, are you requesting ASL interpretation?
Oh, sorry, no.
No, I'm sorry. My apologies. Yeah, um, so I'll I'll get to you. Um, we shouldn't use the chat unless you're requesting ASL. Hello, Amanda.
Good evening. And I've once again missed dinner with my kids to tune in tonight. My kids protested. Mom, what's the point? No one listens on that board. Nothing is going to change. I'm really thrilled to go back to my children tonight and share that you worked hard together and are seemingly on the way to passing a plan tonight and continuing this work into next year. UESF members rallying outside should understand that the absolute worst thing for our schools is if we get taken over by the state. Thank you to the commissioners for moving beyond platitudes and fulfilling your core fiduciary responsibility to our 50,000 children. The budget as recommended is painful, but it is what is required. Thank you, Chief Wallace, Superintendent Matthews, and the entire staff for working through yet another incredibly challenging period with the board. Your patience and persistence is admirable. And one last note, Mr. Duchan, please don't hold our board's antics against our kids. Parents are watching closely and know our votes matter more than ever. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Chanel.
Hi, my name's Chanel. I'm a, I'm a parent of two kids at San Francisco Unified School District. Thank you for allowing me to speak. As a parent, the thought of cuts to my child's classroom is heartbreaking, and it's my hope that a few cuts as possible are made to school sites. That said, a state takeover would be devastating to our district. Um, I, I would like to urge the board to vote for the only state approved plan and stop the state takeover of our district. I'm totally for Superintendent Dr. Matthew's plan on this, and please, please do so. Our, our children, our San Francisco children are dependent on this. As an adult, we cannot let them, them down. So please keep an open mind and vote for the only state approved pan, plan and stop the state takeover of our district.
Thank you.
Thank you, and for being a service for our children.
Reverend Brown.
Hello.
Hello, you can go ahead.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, Mr. Superintendent and Madam President of our school board. I just called to commend you for having the intestinal fortitude. Be tough enough to iron out this challenging problem. And we ought to thank God when people come together in a reasonable, rational, responsible way to make things happen for the good, the common good of all in tough times. And our times are tough, but you've proven that you are tough enough to make a hard decision. I commend everyone and Alexander special for his bringing us to common ground on this almost intractable problem.
Thank you. Hello, Tom.
Hi, I'm a teacher in the district and so is my wife. We also have a kindergarten in the district. I know, to me, it's, it's, it's the district's plan was more of, you know, let's keep all the people at the top who make these giant salaries. I didn't hear anything about like, you know, we'll reduce our salaries because it's about the students. You know, let's cut from some of the people who make the most money, six figures. I didn't hear any of that. What I heard is let's cut the people on the bottom who aren't making the most money but doing the most direct work with students, who are working their tails off day in and day out. We have over 200 paraprofessional openings. I hear no one talking about that. I hear no one being like, oh, that's not good. I hear them praising the district plan while teachers and staff are going to get cut. It's not just teachers in this plan. There's going to be family liaisons are going to get cut. Reach out and communication to, you know, to, uh, families, attendance clerks who are going to, who reach out to families and say, what can we do to make sure your student gets here? That's going to be cut. But it doesn't seem that that's important because of the, those six, right? The priorities are not the students in this plan.
Thank you. Hello, Brandy.
Hi, I'm a public school parent and I stand in solidarity with a lot of the things that, um, have been said about stopping cuts to school sites. Um, it, it can just really cause a lot of, um, damage down the road. If we do that, and I hope that people just make a very forward thinking plan. I'm also really concerned to be frankly about how some of the central office staff have, senior staff have presented the budget information to parents. When I was at, um, a meeting with some of the senior office staff, um, that the San Francisco PTA had organized, all parents were asked to take a poll and say whether we, uh, we thought the district should prioritize equality over equity for funding. And to me, that was just really, um, pretty egregious. So I guess I'm just concerned really about, um, the ability of some of our central office staff to really, our senior staff to really make good decisions if this is how, um, conversations with parents are being orchestrated. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Greg.
Greetings. Uh, my name is Greg Peters. I'm speaking as a parent and a member of the PEPCAC whose job it is to offer input and recommendations related to annual funding of about 80 million from San Francisco voters. As such, I hope to add context to this conversation and some related root issues. My experience on the committee is that of being kept busy and processed, but not in real impact. Our recommendations continue to be limited by a process that has PEPCAC serve more as a pass through formality, often supplanting and filling general fund gaps rather than fulfilling the intent to create supplemental revenue sources to directly benefit students through innovation and equity. We are not making recommendations when we receive proposals that equal the amount of money we are to make recommendations of. Most recently, we've been brought into this political arena related to the budget crisis. Specifically, we continue to fill gaps created by serious and deep cuts to schools and programs. These examples, their resources, etc. Um, I just want to say there's a, a focus on, uh, it, the, the biggest impact will be on our vulnerable priority populations. And I will send my, the rest of my comments to the board directly. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Anita. Anita?
Hi, I am, yes.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I'm calling to say to support the, the staff budget and no state takeover. Our schools have suffered really badly in the last few years due to a lot of reasons. We need to make sure we stay local.
Thank you. Hello, Justin.
Hi, um, I would just like to say a lot of the reason you lost money is a lot of people with options that could go to private or move left the city because you destroyed Lowell, one of the top school in Northern California for 60 years. And you called people privileged instead of hardworking and thanking them for hardworking as Obama used to do. We lost a lot of money because of that. They're also feel you'll do the same to SODA. Say, and, uh, there was a lot of racism versus Asians and whites that were loaded, loaded and ad hominem attacks calling people privileged, which you do that to a white person that's racist, to use the word privilege against somebody based on their color. You don't motivate kids to work hard. You need to teach them that all the immigrant groups that study over 15 hours a week out earn the US average as adults and that hard work pays off. There's a reason why you have a higher achievement gap in San Francisco, lower test scores for black, Latino and Pacific Islander kids than the state average. You don't have charters, you don't have tutors, you don't have mandatory summer and weekend programs to close the achievement gap. You waste $600,000 to paint a wall you could paint for 20,000. You waste 18 million to do an upgrade. You made everybody a year behind in, in math. So the, the, uh, you're not teaching kids that, that hard work will pay off. You're teaching systemic racism and that if they work hard, people are going to discriminate against them. And my daughter, who is black, was taught that, and that's wrong.
Thank you. Thank you. Hello, Rhonda.
Good evening, Dr. Matthews, Deputy Superintendent, former Thiel and Board Commissioners. While I greatly appreciate your plan and all the hard work that went into it, I respectfully ask that you find a way to not make cuts to school sites or at least minimize the cuts, cuts to school sites. I understand that we're in a budget crunch, which it happens pretty much with every public agency regularly. But we can't keep putting the onus on our school sites. The fact that we have limited number of students means that there should be some sort of way that they can make adjustments that won't have this negative impact to the school sites. Our babies are the whole reason why we're here, and we owe it to them to make sure that we're giving them all the necessary resources, including teachers, par professionals, and whatever other individuals that are needed to support them in the classroom. Please, please, please put our students first. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe this is Hava.
Hi, um, so the first thing I want to say or to ask is more transparency on COVID recovery, and it is related. The reason why I'm asking is that this budget crisis is not just about in a normal time. Teachers are expressing that they are in dire straits. Families are in dire straits. Students are in dire straits. The solution, unfortunately, Commissioner Alexander, in principle, I love your plan, but without the details, I could not support it. The other plan is painful. So I'm asking about COVID recovery funds and what happened. Because part of this is about the trauma is what's, what happened over this last couple of years. And if we can find a solution there, or at least you could be more transparent there, because I don't know what happened. So many things that are going wrong are related to that, too.
Thank you.
Thank you for your collaboration, by the way.
Hello, Emmanuel.
Good evening. President Lopez, Superintendent Dr. Matthews, and other board commissioners. My name is Emmanuel Stewart, and I'm the proud but very humble principal at Harvey Milk Civil Rights Academy, and I won't take up much of your time. You have a difficult decision this evening, but I say to you that administrators across San Francisco, whether a small elementary school, an early ed program, or even a large high school have made difficult decisions within the past two years during our pandemic. Your administrators in the past two years have made difficult decisions to support their school community. They have taken on the task of managing distance learning, contact tracing, quarantining classrooms, subbing in classrooms, supporting our educators, our students and their families, and haven't, we, I haven't even mentioned budgeting. My ask this evening from our school board is that you make this decision, but you make a decision. Whatever your decision is, please understand that your administrators will work directly with their school side councils, their families, their classified staff, and their students to support their individual schools and their school communities. I thank you for the time.
Thank you. Hello, Seth.
Uh, good evening, uh, commissioners. Thanks for taking my comment. Um, uh, my name is Seth Brenzel, a board member with the San Francisco Parent Coalition. As Commissioner Lamb put it last week, the clock has run out. We must make, we must take our budget crisis seriously now and pass the only plan that will balance our budget. State takeover could take a decade or more for our district and community to recover. Districts that have gone through it warn us to do everything we can to avoid that fate for our SFUSD and for our children. As the adults charged with responsibility for our students and for this district, please continue to collaborate to ensure that San Francisco Unified School District is a going concern. Thank you and have a good night. Thanks for taking my comment.
Thank you. Hello, Ronald. Sorry, Ronald.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, okay, my name's Ronald. I'm a student. First of all, I would like to say that please, please don't cut JRTC programs and Avid programs like that. Um, I believe they would be helpful for students in creating leadership skills, community building. Um, JRTC personally, um, they've done ocean beach cleanups and helped with the community and give back. And as a senior and an immigrant, I would not be able to speak right here as JRTC helped me build these types of skills. Lastly, as a senior, I want to give back to my community, and I believe that helping save the JRTC program would be the best way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Jennifer.
Hi, um, first I'd like to say something I think everyone on this call could agree with, which is given the state we're in, it is a true shame that the city, county of San Francisco and the state of California are placing these poor budget scenarios on our city schools. The state needs to do better, and we shouldn't be waiting for a hopeful report from the governor in January. That being said, I'm concerned with the ongoing need, uh, that I hear from district management to rebuild trust. I agree, we should always build and rebuild trust, but my concerns rest with the communities with whom we have never built trust in the first place. Our black families, our indigenous families experiencing homelessness. Instead of rebuilding trust with a budget plan that ultimately will allow wealthier schools to face no cuts while schools that desperately depend on their MPSS and weighted student formula funding will receive nothing. It's a budget that rebuilds trust with certain communities and fails to do anything to meet our core values. It is inequitable and it's wrong. We must do better.
Thank you. Hello, Beth. Beth? Beth, are you there? Latoya?
Good evening. Um, first of all, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am a parent and a volunteer of three current SFUSD students. And I'm not sold on either the state taking over or not taking over because I think there is an opportunity for more transparency in the budget. The LCAP meetings have been very helpful. However, I think at the district level, there is still a lot of cloud and smoke and mirrors in some areas. It would be nice if, um, entities like the PEPCAC were present to provide their feedback and other groups, uh, parent groups or other, uh, school-based groups, community-based groups were involved in the process. And I'd appreciate that regardless of who's taking over or who's leading it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Donnie.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Donnie O'Young, Vice President of SCIU 1021, the school district chapter. Our student nutrition members are keeping the children fed, our custodian members are keeping the schools clean. Our clerks are keeping the schools open. We are overworked because of understaffing issues, and you're talking more cuts? We need to invest in more staffing to ease our workloads. We need to, we need a consultant to come in to see where the district is wasting the money. Thank you.
Hello, Ms. Marshall.
Thank you, Mrs. Steele. Good evening, Commissioner Lopez, Central District Board Commissioners. I'm, I'm, on behalf of the NAACP, Reverend Brown's already spoken, I join him with his, his comments and a member of the lines of black school educators. I, what I said last week, I say again with full board. Please do not make your budget cuts on the backs of our students. Please do not make your budget cuts on the block of our, our schools and our low income areas, particularly Baby Hunter's Point. I, I'm heartbroken to see and hear, not to sit to hear, the students are outside the district office protesting. There is no reason for this. I don't know how we got here. There are always warning signs. Uh, there are warning signs when you get ready to run in the red light. There are warning signs when you keep drawing your check in your checking account. So I go, I hope that going forward. So I hope that going forward, the budget office will work closely with the Commissioners and the Superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Kendra.
Yes, how are you? Good. Yeah, so I'm just here to say, like, we should vote for the only state-approved plan and stop the state takeover of our districts, or children are depending on you. I owe the rest of my time.
Thank you. Hello, Tara.
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to refer to the slide that's next steps in budget development. I think it's Slide 8. I think, I don't quite understand how anyone can really give a definitive, like, opinion based upon, like, very broad and generic terms. It's like, this is important work. Important work says who? Also, if revenue or expenditure projections improve, if, okay. And then, and then the highest consideration, who's, how do you define the highest consideration? I just feel like it's very difficult that I can even oppose or go along with things that are a little bit broad and obtuse. I mean, I understand it's a work in progress, but I just think maybe we can be a little bit more definitive with our terms here.
Thank you. It says TLCBD.
On the handle. Apologies, that's my work account. It's Simon Bertrand. I'm calling as a parent of Lowell High School and Everett Middle School children. And I wanted to say thank you, first of all, to the board for listening to those parents last year who felt very strongly that we should reopen the schools in full for in-person learning this year. I think that both my daughters are very happy to be back in school, and the comment I would like to ask tonight of the board is to please pass the state-approved budget, the budget that the staff has put forward. I can't think of anything. As we've struggled for this past couple of years, it's been very difficult times for our students and for our teachers and for our schools. And I think putting us into a state takeover would actually just be the one thing that I hadn't expected that would make things worse. So please do everything you can to pass a budget that will avoid a state takeover of our schools and preserve local control of our schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hello, William. Sorry about that.
You shit, you shit, you shit, you shit, you fuckin' shit.
I can't stop it.
You shit, you shit, you shit.
Is there a way to cut off the mic so that we don't hear it while Judson fixes it on Zoom?
I think we're ready to continue now. We have one more commenter.
Okay, this will be the last comment.
Thank you. Hello, Charles.
Yes, my comment will be quick. I just wanted to thank the board for unifying for local control. No state takeover, please. Schools with 50% enrollment should not be funded the same way they were at 100% enrollment. That creates further deficit spending. The union should be more worried about raises with record inflation, our pension and retirement health benefits. Without a pension and health benefits in retirement, teachers will retire in poverty. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Judson. My apologies for interjecting. If I might, just make a couple of quick comments. Would that be all right?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, this is Michelle again with the Parent Advisory Council. I just wanted to really quickly appreciate folks that called in, shared their concerns, their appreciations. I want to appreciate our students and our educators and everyone who is outside on this cold night standing up for what they know is important and right. And I do want to acknowledge, as others had said tonight, like, this is not, no one wants to be in this position. This is not easy. This is, this is going to be hard. And we know we have to do this, because as someone just recently said, state takeover is likely one thing that could possibly make this pandemic situation worse. And, you know, I want to appreciate Miranda Martin and Parents from Public Schools for their partnership in organizing community events. I've heard folks who say they want more involvement. We hear you, and we're going to, we're continuing to plan events throughout the years.
I made my comment now. Thanks.
I want to appreciate the response by staff. We saw specific things be addressed tonight that have come up before, like the situation around Avid and Peer Resources, even though it may not be exactly what we want to hear, and certainly the next steps. And especially appreciate the collaboration with Commissioners and Superintendent Matthews and staff in figuring out a way forward. And what I've heard is that we know we need to make a plan that's got the details, that's thought out, and that the CDE wants to, wants to see, and we're not stopping there, right? We're going to continue to look at things. All right. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you again for everyone who came out, and we are recognizing that our educators are standing outside in, and joining us in a different way. I'd like to open it up to public comment from Commissioners and our Student Delegate, Student Delegate Lamb.
Thank you. I just want to say that I have quite a few remarks, so if that's okay. I want to thank staff for all their hard work and Commissioner Alexander for putting forward the Core Values Plan, and especially to the public for advocating and organizing around the Core Values Plan. Again, please don't mistake. I am extremely grateful for the work that has been put in into this process over the last couple of months. I guess most of my remarks are going to draw back to the resolution prioritizing classroom spending that was passed at the beginning of this year. This board decided that we wanted to prioritize classrooms when considering budget balancing since the beginning of 2021. And we honestly had the time, and I believe that we should have been creating the Core Values Plan and developing it since the beginning, right when that resolution passed. But we got to last week, and it was too late. And because of this, we're making cuts to school sites and really have no choice but to pass the staff-proposed plan tonight. And like I said last week, every day on campus, I hear from adults about the inability to do basic operations because there's no support and no funding. I and many other students feel it every single day, and to imagine this problem growing worse than what it is today, well, I mean, it's unimaginable. I was in ROTC. It gave me a place to find who I was as a student leader coming into high school. And I work with Peer Resources folks every day, and I see what amazing leaders come out of that program. For me, it almost physically hurts to pass the plan tonight, knowing the effects on school sites. But I know that a state takeover would be even more detrimental to our schools. I am supporting the passing of a balancing plan that was recommended by our fiscal advisors tonight, the staff-proposed plan, while calling on us as a board to figure out how we can adjust this plan before the second interim report. We need to minimize how many educators are getting cut. We need to minimize how many are going to resign. We need to look towards our current funds, looking closely at our central management, and not depending on possible incoming state revenues, even though, yes, we should be advocating for that support. I hope that moving forward, we can truly prioritize our school sites. And to conclude, I want to mention again that it is because we did not take action in accordance with the priorities that we set forward earlier this year that we are making the hard decision tonight. And we need to keep this in mind as we move forward and truly prioritize our sites. I look forward to further conversation, and having said all this, I'm grateful that it seems like we will be taking the first step in balancing the budget tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Bogus, and then Commissioner Lamb.
Yeah, I had, because I had a statement, and I had some follow-up questions. I guess just to say, I think, a thank you to Pam and Elliot for, like, your part of helping us figure out how to navigate the first step of kind of what we're going through. And I would say that in the same breath as saying that we want you to leave as quickly as possible as we get all this under control. And just lifting up that, you know, I support all the recommendations that you put forth and really kind of using that to help guide our decision-making and my decision-making as we move forward. And I think for me, just to lift up that nowhere in your recommendations did you lift up selling any assets or district property, which is, I feel like, something that people have kind of been talking about and just kind of, I think, reminding people that we're not at that state. And that wouldn't necessarily address kind of our structural deficit as well. The question I have for staff is kind of understanding that we're going to have sites winding down supports for students and programs that are geared towards supporting student success. What is going to be in place to support sites and developing kind of plans to manage that type of stuff? And is that a question that we get more answered and more detailed in the spring than we would now? But I guess I'm just curious, like, is there any intention and thought of supporting school sites with the transitions away? Understand that we're going to do everything we can in the short term to kind of stabilize, but just understand that they're moving from kind of the core of our budget out. How, I guess, how do we handle that generally? And are we doing that or more in this moment for those sites that will be impacted?
I would say that some of, some of those specifics, we will be finalizing as we finalize the plan, even moving into budget development and second interim, that we're definitely thinking about and getting feedback from site leaders about certain changes based on carrying out the plan as it's proposed. But I think, yeah, one of the things that I think we've really heard from site leaders about the plan and about different pieces of it is really having a clear understanding of what, like, what these changes mean in terms of how they build their master schedule, right? How they organize the supports in place. So I think that there's going to be more to come, and I think that it's, some of it will be specific to each school or how, you know, how certain allocations are changing for certain programs. So I would say we don't have the exact details in each case right now, but that is definitely something that we've gotten feedback from site leaders on and are planning to really provide guidance and support and backup just to make sure that site leaders, so that really it feels like everyone has what they need information-wise to go through budget development successfully.
I would add to that, one of the key, just remembering and being a former site leader, one of the key aspects of sitting down and looking at your budget and beginning to figure out what to prioritize, what to move here or there, is to have thought partnership. And so one of the biggest supports that they will have in terms of, as we move forward, is thought partnership with the director of their cohort, as well as the assistant super of the cohort. But that thought partnership is really going to be key as we move forward, as they're thinking about how they're allocating resources that are aligned to the mission of their schools.
No, I appreciate that clarity. And I think for me, it's just really important that we get ahead of any perceived issues or gaps that we might experience at the school sites. And really, I think, lifting up the fact that, you know, we might have a school site that's going to lose some of these programs that are vital to that school community, and it might affect their tier status or kind of the amount of support that those students need and kind of change, you know, aspects, dynamics at school sites in ways that we can't 100% foresee, but just really being able to have that knowledge so that we can have additional supports available as much as possible to support with these transitions. And I think my last comment is just to say, I do, I do plan to support the plan that was put forth. And I think for me, this is just the first step and really looking into the spring to see when we'll actually see the budgets for sites and kind of what the true impact is for each of the individual sites. And really figuring out if those sites have what they need to really serve all their students in the way that's expected. And if it's not, us really figuring out how do we adjust and really make that right. I would just say, I think this moment really just highlights the fact that for me, we need to change our budget process and our structure, how we fund things internally, how we communicate it, the amount of transparency in our process, and how we spend are things I think we just need to really increase and change and really do that through a collective process where we can really talk about how we're staffing, how we're holding ourselves accountable, how we're monitoring what we're doing successful and what we're not. I think in a lot of ways, from what I've seen at our school sites, is that we need a higher level of staffing at all of our school sites to really fulfill our mission. But we're also being asked to reduce our ongoing costs. And I feel like as we enter the new year, that's going to be kind of what we need to figure out and to resolve. And just really understanding that, for me, it's important that the size of our budget is reflective of the quality of our schools and that families can really see the fact that we have a billion-dollar budget. And they feel that every time they walk into our public school system. And really understanding that the COVID relief funds that we receive were one-time funds. We really need ongoing money, so hopefully there'll be more money in the next year. And hopefully, there'll be some long-term commitments to support us kind of through the long-term effects of the pandemic. And I would just say to the public finally that the final decisions about the budget will be made by the board in the spring. I mean, that we will kind of ultimately be able to kind of figure out how we make sure we do as little harm as possible to school sites and ensure that every student and family and staff are getting what they need to be successful. And so I'm really excited to engage in that process as we get more numbers and information, to really be transparent and really to make sure everyone kind of understands our process, our decision-making, both the hard decisions, both the hard decisions we have to make, as well as the decisions that hopefully are happy about additional revenue that we've secretly found or been given from the state or federal government. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you to the staff for the tremendous work and to Superintendent Matthews and working with Commissioner Alexander. Really appreciate, you know, the recommendations, not only tonight, that we're going to be voting upon, but also the work that we know is important in January as far as really looking at our administration centralized office and really how do we minimize those impacts in our school sites. I think, you know, through the Budget and Business Services Committee over the last, it feels like, half a year, if not more, really about how we're going to tackle what we know as a district that we're facing, that we have structural deficit. I know, I feel like I keep being on repeat, but that the struggles that we have as a district financially, it's not just one year out. It's two years, maybe three, even more. And so that we have to really, you know, take a close look at how we're putting our funding into work and what educational outcomes and experience and well-being for students and that greatest impact. So I'm also very excited about the work moving forward, because it is an opportunity to create more transparency, more alignment. We've heard, you know, really, really specifically, the alignment between our LCAP and our overall budgeting process, along with, you know, how we're reporting, we're spending the education recovery dollars, both at the state and federal level, really do need to be aligned. So I think out of this process, as painful and hard it is, I think this is going to actually make our district even better to be able to really speak to, you know, how are we putting our investments to that educational experience? And certainly, we know that public education is severely and chronically underfunded for decades, and that right now, we do have a call to action to the state. I also want to name, in addition to what Deputy Superintendent raised about the advocacy with the large urban school districts and the impacts to Prop 98, advocacy for greater local control funding formula. We are also meeting with Dr. Senator Pan on Thursday to talk about additional funding. to talk about additional funding separate for COVID recovery and that the importance of that funding going directly to LEAs, lead educational agencies like ours, so that we can continue building and supporting the requirements from COVID and that recovery, either be going from testing, contact tracing, everything that our educators, our site administrators are talking about that they're being faced with on a daily basis. And really, how do we continue to limit the amount of children that are missing out on long-term, you know, instructional time or time at schools because of extended quarantines because of COVID? So I just wanted to express that, you know, the strategies I had are also gonna be very important. One thing about, you know, I'll speak to experience directly of being with a school district when it gets taken over by a state, by the state, it is detrimental. It's detrimental to students, it's detrimental to staff. Just this week, I had great fortune to be on a town hall discussion with former OUSD Board President David Kakashiiba, a dear friend and colleague, who talked about the implications and what it meant to lose that local governance. And now nearly 20 years later, Oakland Unified is also in a very financially vulnerable spot, similar to us. And so that district, it's near and dear to me, I was born and raised in the East Bay. It has not recovered nearly after 20 years. We've seen that with City College of San Francisco, losing 40% of its student enrollment since the accreditation crisis. And it also is facing fiscal insolvency as soon as this upcoming fiscal year. So I think I really appreciate my colleagues, you know, taking the difficult choices we have before us, also really thinking about the long-term investment so that we ensure that we fulfill our obligations that we've made to our staff and our workforce. And really ultimately, how we're gonna really take a look at the financial, long-term financial health. And it is gonna be really hard. I don't want to minimize the impact that has to our educators and our staff and particular to our students and the experience at the school site. So to echo Commissioner Bogus, I think, you know, the work I had in the next two months particularly is really about how will sites be impacted and what it's going to look like. And that's what we heard time and time again through the town halls with parents and what I've been hearing from so many of our stakeholders. And ultimately, at the core of this, we cannot have our district go bankrupt. I mean, that's what a state takeover means. It means a district is bankrupt. It can no longer make its payroll or its financial obligations. And so in closing, I just want to express that collaboration and having tough conversations, that really moving towards a sustainable path for our district and for our students.
Commissioner Collins and then Student Delegate Liam.
First, I just want to say thank you to everyone who has contributed to helping our district move forward in regards to the budget. Thank you, Commissioner Alexander, for proposing the Core Values Plan and incorporating such important values into what you have pushed forward. Also, a huge shout out to the parents, students, educators, and everyone who has been involved in this process. I just want to say that it's truly heartbreaking to hear that the budget in classrooms and sites are getting cut. I just want to say that I, as a student delegate, hear and see all the students that come to board meetings that talk about their experiences with these wonderful, wonderful programs, whether it's from students coming from middle schools like MLK or high schools like Burton talking about programs like Avid or Peer Resources. I see and hear your concerns. As someone coming from a smaller school that's already under-resourced with a limited budget and opportunities for students, I can't even imagine what this will look like. Most of my peers, including myself, play a huge role within our schools because of classes like Peer Resources that teach us about transformative justice or classes like Avid that help first-generation, low-income students at my school achieve their dreams of attending college. Specifically, Avid has empowered students at my school, helping them recognize the potential that they have. This is heartbreaking. With us needing to finalize and solidify a plan tonight, I believe that it's crucial to pass the staff-proposed plan and dig ourselves out of the hole that we got ourselves into. I just want to say that this is no easy decision and no doubt a long journey, but to prevent the state from taking over, I believe that it's best to follow the budget balancing plan recommended by our fiscal advisors. Lastly, I just want to wrap up by saying I look forward to engaging in future conversations to make sure that students are the ones who are, who we are prioritizing in every step of the way, especially with the limited budgeting we have. Thank you.
Thank you. I really appreciate the comments that have been made tonight. And I am grateful for community members, for your involvement along the way and for your comments. And I'm also very grateful for the work of staff to prepare information for us and for the public. And I'm also very grateful for Commissioner Alexander for presenting an alternate plan that allows us to have really important dialogue as a community. And I also appreciate my colleagues on the board for our willingness to ask questions, analyze different perspectives, but also ultimately work in collaboration with one another in service of our district. I do also want to note that while this is a very serious issue related to getting our district into fiscal solvency, I do feel that there has been a lot of misinformation and there has been, I think, a dramatization of, of what is going on. I have faith in our board and in our staff that we are gonna make responsible decisions. We may not always agree on the best path forward, but I think the ultimate goal, I have confidence in the superintendent and I have confidence in my colleagues, even when we disagree. And I think it's important for us as a community to be able to examine different viewpoints and different, different ideas in order to reach the best solution. And so as I stated in the meeting last week, even though I think it is uncomfortable to consider different perspectives, I had faith that ultimately, that Commissioner Alexander and the superintendent would be able to work together. And I have, I have faith that as a board, we will be able to move forward and continue to look for options and make tough decisions. But one area I think has left me very sad, and that is that throughout this process, there has been a lack of, I think this process has been damaging in some ways beyond just the fact that we have to make cuts potentially to programs or we will make cuts to programs, is that it feels like it's not a very transparent process. And that I think that there's been a, a broken trust with our community and with our, with our educators and with our families and specifically with our students. When I hear that PIF PAC members, and so the PIF is an oversight committee, it's, they oversee money that's collected in addition to the money that's provided to the state. When they say that they feel like they're a pass-through organization, when they say that they feel like there's a lack of transparency, and when I hear that they are disinvited from participating in meetings to share their views and their perspectives when they were actually chosen by us to oversee $80 million of city, city funds that directly fund programs like Avid and social workers and peer resources, I have a lot of concerns about the process. And I think this goes back to questions that were made about, you know, students also raised about why did it take so long? If we, if we initially put forward, Commissioner Sanchez and Commissioner Alexander put forward a resolution to, to look at site-based funding, and I, I just, I have to wonder how we're gonna move forward and make, when, even if we can find additional funds, how are we gonna make good decisions if, as board members, we have trouble getting information? And then this, and that, and that information is also not communicated to the larger public. You know, I specifically asked how Avid would be impacted because community members reached out. I'm glad to hear, I'm sad to hear that it will be cut in this budget. I am glad to hear that staff intends to prioritize it. When staff says that peer resource funding will move to sites, that is not an accurate portrayal of what is going to happen to peer resources based on this budget. Peer Resources is based on a model of partially funding from, it's half-funded from the school site and it's always been half-funded from the district. Programs that lose district funding end up folding and they do not exist. So when staff says that funding will move to sites, that means most programs will die. And so I think that needs to be very clear for, for the community that, that most peer resource programs cannot sustain themselves based on part-time funding from a school site. Additionally, when we hear that there are multilingual programs that will no longer be supported through the district, I think the public needs to understand that so that in the future, we can fight to get funding to bring them back. What I'm hearing from, from the district is that we will no longer have funding for multi-language, for dual-language programs, biliteracy and world language programs at sites centrally. And, and when they say they're moving it to sites, there, we also have to understand that we're reducing the money that we're giving to schools. So they will be even less likely to carry some of the programs that we're offloading onto them. And so I want the public to understand that and that, that is what's heartbreaking about this budget. I also know that when we work together as a community and when we advocate, we have achieved great gains, we've achieved higher pay raises for teachers, and I'm glad that there's advocacy going on at the state. There are hundreds of millions of dollars available in grants. And I guess I'm also concerned that staff, I want to make sure that they are doing anything and everything to get money that we can to put back programs that we may, that we are cutting. And I want to make that information accessible to the public. And so I'd like to know from Deputy Superintendent Myung Lee, I made a request in September that grants be placed in a, online so families and educators can understand how we're doing as far as potential grant revenue. And I wanted to know when the public will be able to see the status of grants that is state and federal. Some of them are one-time and some of them are ongoing that could potentially be available to fill some of these gaps.
Commissioner, so that information has, has now been posted on the district's website.
Okay.
It happened very recently.
Like today or yesterday?
Chief Wallace, please help me with this. I think it may have been earlier today.
Okay, great. So that is very good news. I'm glad to hear that. I would like, you know, and I'm, I'm also hearing from the public when we share information like that, they are willing to help us advocate, they're willing to help us write grants. Like, our community wants to support us in this work, but we can't, we can't leverage the partnership of our students and our parents and our larger community if we're not, if we're not working in partnership with them or we're not making our decisions transparent. And currently, I do not feel like Central Office is operating with as much transparency as would be most beneficial for us. And I'm looking forward to working with Commissioner Alexander to figure out ways that we can create more transparency for the public, specifically around Central Office funding, and also looking for ways that we can do a better job in advocating for state and federal dollars. Thank you very much.
May I just pick up on one aspect of what you shared, Commissioner Collins? And this, I, I'm sort of at the verge of repeating a couple of things that I said earlier, but on the issue of advocacy and, and linking our efforts, broad grassroots efforts as well as sort of district leadership and in working in partnership with other districts, that letter that I referenced earlier that is accessible through that slide. Sorry, this, this discussion is...
Is it listed on Board Docs in the slide, one of the links?
It's, it's not a separate, it's not a separate attachment, but, but I think we should go ahead and make that more visible on the front page of our website. And I will say, it has, it's quite well-aligned with discussions in the Rules, Policy and Legislation Committee as well as in the Budget and Business Services Committee and meetings of the full board these past couple of months. It has very, very important recommendations and requests for how the state, starting with the governor, how we would hope that policymakers would allocate the significant growth in Prop 98 revenues that, that seem to be around the corner. So it's a little dense, there, there, there's some technical information in there, but, but we are really eager to engage our whole community in, in making those appeals to our policymakers, including our legislators in the spring. So I guess...
I really, really appreciate that. And I think, you know, words, as, as a former English teacher, words have power, right? Writing a document like that is important. I think there's a lot of community members that may not have felt interested in budget conversations, realize this is a very important conversation. So making that public is really wonderful and I'm happy to work with you and I think my colleagues on the board to find ways that we can communicate to the larger public, ways that they can advocate and support our efforts as a district. And anything that I can do, you know, I offer my service, but I, I really do appreciate that work. And this is not just our problem, right? It's, it's a collective problem that we're facing in this state. But I, I do really appreciate that. And making that accessible is really, I think, the first step in helping us to support your work.
Well, thank you. I want to thank my colleagues for their comments. I pretty much am aligned with everybody. I want to thank staff as well for this really hard work that you've been engaged in for months now. And I want to thank the public for their comments tonight, minus that one naughty person. I do think that it's been a really engaging process and it's been hard for all of us. It's been the hardest, obviously, two years coming now of all of our lives. And so working through this together is super important and being as collegial as possible is very important in my mind. Commissioner Alexander, thank you so much for your excellent work engaging the community in your proposal. And I expect that you and I and others will continue this work going forward to make sure that we have a plan going forward that will not balance our budget on the backs of our kids. And so to, just to be clear, if this budget goes through, all the way through July and we pass it as is, what will happen at the sites is gonna be a disaster. We're already in a disaster, an ongoing tragedy. To be sure, it's not just about Peer Resources, Avid or Jay Ratzi. It's about people who work with our kids day in and day out, who provide them love, support, academics, and they're already suffering. People are leaving, not just our district, districts throughout the state and the United States because it is super hard right now. So if this goes forward, we know what will happen. It'll be worse, we'll be less likely to be able to retain our educators, our parent, you know, our parent educators, our site leaders, because it'll just be too much stress moving forward. So we definitely are looking toward a more rosy budget outlook from the state. If that happens, I'm very glad to hear from Deputy Superintendent Myung Lee that, that the sites will be prioritized, that the programs we've talked about will be prioritized in the add-back and that we can move forward. It'll still be very painful, but that we can move forward and not have as many cuts to our sites. I want to thank our educators who are out in the streets right now with students and family members. They're the ones who are doing the work day in and day out with our students. They deserve our support as much as possible. I want to echo something that Commissioner Alexander said earlier, I think I've said it publicly. I, I value everybody who works in our district. I value everybody who works at our Central Office. I value everybody who works at the site level, anybody in between. It's not about the people, it's about what we have to provide at the site level. It's about what we have to provide at the site level. And so we have to make hard decisions moving forward. And some of those decisions are going to be how we can reduce our central office staffing. It just has to be. And again, I'm really good friends with many of the folks there. I don't want people to lose their jobs. But we can't continue to make decisions that mean that sites get their budgets cut. One of the public members said something that really resonates with me. Sites that are, all sites will make a cut. We'll make a cut 10% across the board from all sites. But the school sites that have the wherewithal historically to raise money, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars for some of them, will not feel anything, really, comparatively speaking, to the sites we know don't have that wherewithal historically. They won't be able to raise any money. So the sites will be ongoing and permanent for those sites. So keep that in mind as we move forward in this budgeting process. Thank you, everybody.
I, I just want to echo my colleagues tonight and show a lot of appreciation, first and foremost, to the community, the parents, the, our labor partners, the educators, all our allies for helping us through this process. It definitely hasn't been easy and it's going to continue to be very tense as we walk through the next several months. But as I said before, I am, you know, I'm 100% confident that we're going to land in a place that we need to and we're going to be able to bounce back from this budget deficit into a stable, solvent school district. I do want to thank our board chair, our budget chair and the budget committee for monitoring the budget throughout this whole entire year. You guys have done a phenomenal job of supporting staff in terms of asking the right questions, making sure we're staying on top of deadlines, and really holding us to timelines that, you know, keeps us accountable to moving towards what the goals that we're trying to set for. So, so thank you to Chair Lam and the budget and her crew. And I also want to say thank you to the staff superintendent for, for just walking us through this. And also the CDE expert Elliot. It is, it is a continuous, continued fight, you know, moving into the next couple of months. You know, I was out of school today and working with a kid. And it's true, you know, we do need staff on the ground. And the kids do need us on the ground. And so as we build out, you know, we have to continue to keep that in mind and working towards a budget that is reasonable for us to operate a school district and be able to meet the needs of our kids that are in the schools. And so, you know, together with our staff, I'm committed to working with our colleagues and our student delegates to making sure that we get there. And so I appreciate everyone for, for again, supporting us. And for me, the, the best thing is just communication. We just constantly need to be communicating all the time. Over-communication, or maybe not over, you know, healthy communication, let's do that. Healthy communication, back and forth, you know, is, is for me the best thing for us to, to be productive. So again, thank you all.
I'd, I'd like to make some comments to build on what I've been hearing tonight over the last couple of months. And I'm really, I'm really trying to hold it because this is actually very infuriating to think of this idea that we are basically cornered into accepting a proposal that deeply impacts school sites. And we keep saying, but we don't want students to suffer over the state takeover. We don't want students to be affected and impacted. I think 10% cut at school sites and the numerous programs that they've been speaking on is going to impact them. I think it's going to impact the educators who are fighting right now outside on the streets to protect their worth, to stay motivated, to continue to show up every day for our students. And we are essentially saying, we got to this point because of the process we've engaged in and our trusting that that will continue in the next coming months. I, I honestly, I, I don't see it. I don't see how there's a semblance of hope that, given how we got to this situation, we expect our, our district to continue to a process to maybe, if we get the revenue we need, we can save these programs and support our educators. My, my first question to our staff, and I'm sure we've been asking this throughout the time, but I just want very clear, direct answers, given that we keep hearing this excuse about a late-in-the-game proposal to support our schools over Central Office. How did we get to a point where in May we passed a resolution that is titled Classroom Instructional Spending and Other School-Based Spending as a Priority in Light of Upcoming Deficits? How is May 11th, 2021 not enough time to bring in a budget that prioritizes classrooms?
Maybe we can...
I guess...
Go ahead, Emery.
Oh, I, okay.
Actually, actually, Emery.
Sure, yeah.
And this isn't a, but I would like, because Deputy Superintendent Lee was about to speak. So if you could let him speak and then you can add on it to anything he wants to, if, if he leaves out anything that you were going to cover.
Thanks, Dr. Matthews. Yes, I was going to suggest maybe we team up on, on this response. That's a, that's a broad question, President Lopez. It's an appropriate question, and we heard that expressed by our student delegates as well. So one thing I would say is that, and, and we've had some conversations with, with Commissioner Alexander to this point as well. I will say that for, for the teams part, the staff teams part, we did not and have not viewed this, the work that we've been engaged with at, in conflict with the instructional spending resolution that was passed in May. Definitely can see that, that there have been different, different perspectives about that. And in terms of what, and I don't want to speak for anybody, but, but how somebody might look at where we are now to say, hey, this, this doesn't seem to align with what I might have expected from this resolution. But there are, there are many ways in... As Chief Wallace said, we, we got the particular directive from CDE to, to develop a plan on this timeline in September. So it wasn't clear to us until fairly recently that, that this particular December, mid-December deadline was in effect. So we certainly were planning to confront this large structural deficit in the course of preparing for the, for the upcoming fiscal year, 2223. But it's not that we had the understanding from back in May or prior to September, frankly, that, that we had to deliver this, this particular type of plan on this timetable. Emery, do you want to, or Chief Wallace, do you want to add anything to that?
I, I just want to point out that with the resolution, it speaks to coming to, bringing us an update in September of this year. So maybe it fell along the same timeline where we had to submit something mid-December. But if we were to have gone through this path, we would have had a proposal. We would have had information provided to the school board in September of this year to at least enter those discussions with the priority of classrooms.
Yes, and I think what I was trying, I can't, I can't remember off the top of my head.
In one of the presentations that we did make, that, that staff did make in, I believe it was the October committee, the whole. So it was the first Tuesday in October. So, so we were a few days late on that September 30th deadline. That's referenced in that resolution. We did address the, that particular part of the, of the resolution that called for, for a progress report or timetable on implementing the provisions of the resolution. That was incorporated into a presentation that was made at, I want to say October 4th. I might have that date mixed up. So it, it was not its own separate presentation, but, but our, our progress on implementing that, that clause of the resolution was incorporated into that presentation in October.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. And I know sometimes we don't stick exactly to those timelines, but I guess my main concern is how we got to then a staff proposal that was focusing on cutting these really crucial programs that have provided crucial experiences for our students versus the least amount which is being cut to our administrative budget. How, how did that conclusion come to be?
Maybe I'll just observe that. And Chief Wallace, please correct me if I've got any of these dates wrong, but we have been sharing our thinking for, for a couple of months as this, as this plan has taken shape. And I believe we shared the, in three different meetings, through the course of three different meetings, we shared the, the proposal that is basically in front of you today back in early November. So we, we have been trying, we have tried to be explicit and concrete about the elements of the proposal. So if I understand your question, President Lopez, you're, you're asking, how did we get here? I guess part of my response is we have been, we have been showing our, our thinking in chunks for the last couple of months.
You're correct, but I also know that this isn't the first time you're hearing this argument from this board. So even within each time we listen to the budget, I, I am not understanding why we continue to propose something that prioritizes staff positions that are higher up than the ones who are on the ground. I'm seeing Commissioner Collins and Commissioner Alexander want to comment.
I just want to say that I, I want to, you know, validate your statement, President Lopez. When I was budget chair, that was a recurring conversation that we had. And I believe that Commissioner Sanchez and Commissioner Maliga introduced a resolution at that time which talked about zero-based budgeting. And so I was excited to think that that would have happened in 2019. That was, we were starting that conversation of how do we decide what are the necessary things for a school? And, and I've consistently asked that. I think to some degree, as a board, we have to just not, we have to answer that question. And my, what is upsetting to me honestly is that we haven't moved past asking the question. And, and we're still allowing, now as a district, our definition of what is the minimum requirement at a school is teachers, a principal and a clerk, which I don't think is what a school needs to be fully functional and support students. I think we need nurses and social workers and art teachers and RSPs and, and paraeducators. And, and we've never had that discussion. And we've continued to just put it off and say, well, we'll just let the school figure it out with their weighted student formula. And we, we had discussions when I was on the budget committee as a chair, that what that means is do I want to cut off my arm or do I want to cut off my leg? That's a free choice, but it's not actually functional. And so that's what we're, we're doing right now. And I do think, I really appreciate President Lopez for at least naming that and Commissioner Sanchez for naming that. That this current budget is not, it does not support students and it will not encourage educators to continue to commit to working in conditions that are really unworkable. So thank you for raising that question.
Yeah, I, President Lopez, I, I think it's a really important question. And I have, I've had conversations privately with staff about this question. And since you raised it in public, I think it's worth, I'd like to comment on it a little bit and just give some of my thoughts on it. I, and there have been times over this whole period where I've been really, frankly, angry and frustrated and wanting to kind of almost find somebody to blame because I was having a similar thought process. I was like, we, we passed the resolution in May. It was unanimous. It was really clear. And when I read, I went back and read it. I was like, it talks about our core values, right? It talks about comparing to similar districts that have allocated more resources to the school, like Long Beach, right? So, so when people told me, oh, you brought this proposal forth at the last minute, I was like, wait a minute, I don't, I think we actually passed this back in May, right? And so I have had that very similar feeling. And so I've been asking that question myself and trying to, and, and I think really good dialogue with staff on it. And I, the conclusion I've come to is I think our staff are incredibly dedicated. I think they're working in good faith. And I think as Deputy Superintendent Lee says, they have done pieces of it. It's not like the whole resolution hasn't been implemented. But there are some key pieces that haven't happened. And one is actually one that the staff initiated, which was zero-based budgeting. So I think that's been really interesting. I mean, that when I came on the board, we knew we had this deficit. But in January, we knew we had this deficit. And the staff were engaged in a process around zero-based budgeting that was intended to inform the 2122 school year. And then if you'll recall, in the budget committee, we talked about this in great detail. And then we made a decision at the recommendation of staff, which I think was the right decision, to sort of postpone that process because it was, it was really hard. And we, we allocated some of those American Rescue Plan funds to sort of kind of hold harmless our whole budget. And we said, you know what? Let's pause on our budget cutting and give us until December, which is where we are now, to really engage in zero-based budgeting. I think our budget team and executive leadership team have really made their best effort at that. But the truth is, we haven't done it. And so, and again, I don't think this is, what, even what the staff plan is, it isn't, it wouldn't, zero-based budgeting is starting from zero, right? Which means you really have to analyze every single position. And it would be at a school, right? As well, as people have pointed out, you know, that includes, why do we have classrooms with eight or 12 kids? As, as it also means, why do we have three different places in our central office that coach principals or four different places that develop curriculum? And those are like, those are structural problems within our district that our current systems don't offer any way of addressing. And I almost wonder, and, and this is really a wondering, whether a large organizational bureaucracy can, can reinvent itself. I mean, I almost think that there may be a need for outside help in doing this because it's really, really hard to ask a division chief to cut their own people, right? It's really, really hard to ask, when you have an organization with 12 division chiefs, which again, has grown over the years. That was not a deliberate decision to go from three division chiefs to 12. That happened over a course of years for good reasons, right? People said, this is an important job. This person's really good. Let's promote them. But now it's gotten to where it is. And for, to ask those people to then coordinate amongst themselves, figure out where there's duplication of services, cut their own departments, like, that's a big task that I, my conclusion is that it's not because our, and again, I would, I mean, I think you all should speak to this, but I don't think it's because they didn't want to do it or didn't work hard at it or didn't try to do it. I actually think we collectively maybe need to sort of, maybe get some independent help to really do a detailed analysis. And so my hope would be, I mean, part of what the superintendent and I have talked about is bringing in some folks who are a little more independent, who can really look, and in January, we can't do this all in January. But in January, I think we could say, let's identify another set of, you know, possible cuts of duplication of high-paid positions that maybe are uncommon, those kind of things. I think in January, we could do a piece of that work and come back to the board. But I think the longer restructuring conversation is going to take honestly longer than that. And I think maybe we're going to need to engage an outside firm or somebody who can kind of really look at what's happened. And, and again, I want to emphasize, this was not a decision that was made. A lot of this happened before Dr. Matthews got here, honestly. I mean, we, Commissioner Sanchez and I have been unearthing old organizational charts and talking about what it was like in 2006, 2009, 2010. I mean, I think there's a historical... I mean, I think there's a historical forensic process that we need to go through, right? To sort of unpack how this happened. But really to ask the question, are these positions, A, necessary and important, you know, and often it's a position that again, is really highly paid. So if you have one person working as an executive director, that may fund two teachers, you know, three or four paraprofessionals, right? So it's, those are real trade-offs in our district. And again, I think, I think that's going to, that some of that is going to be a longer process, some of that we're not going to be able to do. And what I'm excited about in this moment is that I think it feels like there's for the first time, maybe a commitment to do that work. And so that's what gives me hope. And I, and I don't, so I don't know, that's for what it's, I don't know if I'm answering, that, that's kind of my analysis. I don't think it's because they didn't want to do it or didn't try to do it, but I do think, just on an organizational level, it's really, really challenging work, especially as we came out of a pandemic. There's, and then we remember, we've been trying to reopen schools. I mean, we've been, so I do think, I'm not trying to make excuses for staff, I think it's work we have to do. And I think there's a lot of reasons why it hasn't happened. I don't know if I answered your question.
I, I'd like to respond just, and then Commissioner Lamb, if you wanted to touch on that. But I, I don't disagree that this is a longer process. What is true is the people we need to engage are our teachers. If you want to talk about any of the effectiveness of our programs, whether they're actually impacting our students or not, how well or not well they're working and supporting them, they are the ones. When we talk about this engagement process, I would have loved to see our educators engaged directly on the ground in every single one of those school buildings. And I get that we didn't have enough time because of the time, the timeline that we have now. My hope would have been to send a message with what we're voting on tonight, that we are choosing our educators and knowing in the coming months, there will be revisions, there will be, might be more funding, there's more money we can work with, at least we have, we can say, we're working with you. The people who are with our children right now, no one sitting here tonight, except for Commissioner Sanchez, will be in the classroom tomorrow. After having a discussion about who we want to choose and who we value the most in the message that we're sending. And, and again, I know that we're, we are all struggling with this process and I understand that, but I, we have to keep bringing it back to the people who are there. Many people have so many ideas, I knew this as an educator when I was teaching, I always heard of how we need to do this work from people who have never even gone through a credentialing process, who don't understand the educational system and who have committed all this work, paid all this money to be a teacher. And we're having this conversation, we're hearing them, and it's really frustrating to get to this point, to continue to be pushed and pushed and pushed. I don't know what we're going to do when we finally reach the point where people are going to choose themselves over this work because of what the messages that we keep sending.
And can I just say, I totally agree with what you're saying. And I think that's what disturbs me, and that's why I've been so frustrated over this process, because I think even symbolically, when we have a plan that, that preserves 75 executive directors and, and directors and 12 chiefs, and again, I love our chiefs, like, so this is not about any individual chief, but that sends a message. Like that sends a message. And we say, oh, we can cut 50 million from schools, no problem, right? We can cut 350 educators, no problem. We can't cut a single chief, right? I mean, that to me sends a, a strong and I think disturbing message. So I totally agree with you, President Lopez.
I haven't had access to the Zoom, apologies, Mr. Duchan.
No worries.
Mr. Duchan, the panelists, so you can just go ahead and speak.
Am I good?
Oh.
Can you hear me? I'm sorry, I unmuted.
He's not muted, so I'm not sure, he may have to try to log off and log back on.
I can hear him.
Yeah, we, we can hear him.
Oh, can you hear other panelists?
All right, hold on there. There we go. Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. I want to raise two points about our recommendations. I focused on the initial ones. And secondly, the words were chosen very, very carefully. So I will draw your attention to number two on the ones tonight. And that was aligned staffing at all levels with student enrollment. All levels means all levels. You're, one of the foundational reasons of the problem you're dealing with is you have declining enrollment. And when you have declining enrollment, reducing staff at a site doesn't necessarily mean reducing services. If you have 400 kids and you lose 100 of them, you don't need as many teachers. And that may happen through attrition. So the underlying statement with that is there is still work to be done. Secondly, if you look at our midterm recommendations, which I did not go through, is, was to analyze district office staffing and assign staff the task of coming up with any additional recommendations or reassignment to schools. Your work is not done. And while this may have kind of snuck up on you and you get S R money and a lot of things to deal with, the problem you have tonight is just realignment. And I'm going to also say this in my role as representing the state, you are in a very critical period and you need to be cautious about re, not realignment, but restructuring. You'll be bringing on a superintendent at the end of the year. And I think it's important for this to be a long-term process so long as you get through the short-term energy. And I don't know that it will be as painful as what you've heard from a lot of the speakers. There's been some attrition, there'll be some realigning in terms of moving people from one site to another. And I recognize that nobody wants to change school sites, but that may be necessary. I cannot promise you more money, I know everybody's working hard to get it, but the task before you tonight is really to approve and concept two things, that you are going to make the necessary staff cuts and you will realign staff at all levels in order to meet the needs of the number of students you have. And keep in mind, you went from 57,000 to, I mean, to five, 50,000, that's a 14% loss of students. Well, there's a lot of districts that aren't half that size, so that's significant. So the work at hand, and I, I know it's easy to point fingers, I think it's a little bit more difficult to just move forward and take care of it. But that is really the reason the state has stepped in, not because the state wants to take over, the state wants the problem fixed and to be able to say, San Francisco took care of it. And Pam and I are here to help in any way we can. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments, unless there are any other comments from commissioners or our student delegates, we can put this up for a vote. I just need guidance on how to proceed.
Well, can I? So I just want to, I think that was an important conversation and I want to end on a more helpful note is, again, I want to remind everyone, I think we do have a path forward and I think these things have been acknowledged. I think, like I said, I think this work is really, really hard and I think to expect, you know, our, I, I think it's expecting a lot and I think we have a path forward. And so I would, if it's okay with my colleagues, withdraw my proposal with, with the understanding that again, we're going to proceed with, as we've talked about collaboratively, and come back in early February with a deeper analysis that would inform our path moving forward, that's based around that proposal. So I'm not withdrawing it in, I'm withdrawing it formally, but I'm not withdrawing the concept. So the concept is going to get analyzed more deeply in January and to come back in, in late January, early February.
And I would say that the process has already started as we started to schedule meetings to do just that.
Yeah.
President Lopez, just to help out our, our clerk, Ms. Lenhoff, could we get a motion and a second, I believe to approve the fiscal year 2022, 23, 23, 24 budget balancing plan?
I'd like to. Sorry, it was motioned.
So both proposals were moved and seconded though, so, so the vote should just be clear which one you're voting on.
That's, that's correct. And that's what I wanted guidance on, but it, it sounds like Commissioner Alexander is now moving, does he need to make a motion and us approve that?
The board does not need to approve, you just need to not move in second and vote on that.
We moved both of them, so just to be above board, maybe we just move in second, just...
That's what I recommend, I would move in second, just the one and vote on just the one.
So I'll move the staff proposal.
I'll second that. All right, I'll reread it to add clarity. We are voting on item one, fiscal year 2022-23 and 2023-24 budget balancing plan 2112-14SO2. Roll call vote.
Student Delegate Lamb?
Yes.
Student Delegate Liang?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Vice President Maliga?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
And Commissioner, President Lopez?
No. All right. We've done item two, moving on to item three.
What?
Fiscal year 2021-22 first interim report and positive fiscal certification for the San Francisco Unified School District and County Office of Education 2112-14SO4. I need a motion and a second.
Presenting this item will be our Chief Financial Officer, Megan Wallace.
Thank you so much. So for this item, I'm going to be very brief and just state that with the adoption of the proposed fiscal year 2022, 23, and 2023, 24 budget balancing plan under item H1, staff now requests approval for the fiscal year 2021, 22 first interim report with a positive fiscal certification for submission to the California State Superintendent of Public Instruction by tomorrow's deadline of December 15th. And just as a reminder, staff presented on the first interim report at the December 7th special meeting for the committee of the whole. The presentation and details of the report are attached for your reference, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Before we do that, I'd like to open it up to public comment and remind us to turn off our mics when we're not, sorry.
Please raise your hand if you care to speak to the first interim report. Could that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please?
Buenas noches, por favor levante sus manos y desenreden un comentario público. Gracias. Thank you.
Sing four hands. President Lopez, his forehand. Brandy, did you care to speak?
No, sorry, it was a mistake, I accidentally raised.
Okay, no problem. Hello, Anne Marie? Anne Marie, are you there? Hello, Chris?
Hello, Judson, can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Thank you. I'm Chris Claus, a special education teacher at Washington High School. And while I'm disappointed that there are considerations about this, these higher cuts to school sites, I am hopeful that the conversations will be continuing and that the information in this first interim report will be accurate and presented clearly to the members of the public who listen in and that people will be given actual opportunities to provide feedback that is listened to. It hurts me when I hear that people didn't know, that people wanted things, when I myself have commented, oh, hey, I need more clarity on this, and when I've heard others comment that. And I'd like to thank you all for the work that you've done on this so far and encourage you to continue making this work and avoid making harmful cuts to school sites wherever humanly possible.
Thank you.
Yeah. I just want to say that, you know, we go from 57,000 enrolled to 50,000 enrolled, that's definitely a decline in enrollment, that's true. And, but I feel like we just want to take the easy way out and we say, oh, well, we get about 20 kids per class and so let's just, you know, divide 7,000 by like 350 teachers, well then you got 20 kids per class. I don't think that that's the best way to go about things. One of the main things why people don't want to choose or that are privileged enough to not choose public school is the teacher to student ratio. If you want to make students come to your district, how about maybe only have 15 kids per class? Maybe that should be the cutoff instead of just saying, well, you know, as long as we're at the cutoff of just 20 kids per class, like it's the first thing to go.
Thank you. Hello, Gregory?
Hi, thank you. I do think that, you know, the, the district is very top-heavy, all the chiefs and executives, and that cuts do need to be made there. And I think it's pretty much impossible for a bureaucracy to make cuts within itself. I think the, the board should consider getting outside help to, to make those kinds of cuts. At the same time, when there are 7,000 fewer students, I do not think it's realistic to not cut school staff. I just don't, I don't see numerically how that could ever end up with a balanced budget. So I asked again the board to vote for the staff budget, but try to continue to make cuts from the executive positions where possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the 415379 phone number.
Yes, hello. Hello, do you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm a teacher with San Francisco Unified, I've taught for this district since, well, about 23 years in all teaching positions, various levels. And from that time, what I've seen is that there's been cuts, you know, there used to be home act, there's no home act, there's to be shop, there's no shop, there should be peer resources, there's no, there's no peer resources. You know, school is less fun. And then the, the flip side, like you've been talking about, is the admin or the teachers on special assignment, the IRFs, all that has increased. So I really hope that in your January, February meetings, you just, you look at like, the, the achievement gap has been talked about since then, 25, 30 years, it's been exactly the same, nothing has budged. So what we're doing is wrong and I have my opinions about what has, you know, could be more helpful, but I really think you need to start looking at getting more people with credentials in district offices, back into the buildings and, and really, really honing in on what works at each individual school. The schools are so different, I go to totally different schools and they're night and day, the resources, what the kids get, the number of students in the classroom, everything. Thank you.
Thank you. President Lopez, that concludes the public comment.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from our student delegates or commissioners? Any questions or comments from our student delegates or commissioners? Seeing none, let's do a roll call vote.
Student delegate Lamb?
Yes.
Student delegate Liang?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Vice President Maliga?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
President Lopez?
Yes. Item four, annual and five-year report relating to the collection and expenditure of developer fees, 2112-14 SO5. I need a motion and a second on special order five.
So move. Second.
Thank you. I'd like to call on Chief Kamala Noten to present this item.
Great, thank you, commissioners. Good evening. This will be a very, very brief presentation. Tonight, I'm here to present an annual report that's required by state law that allows us to collect developer impact fees. Our recommendation is that the board review and adopt the attached developer impact fee annual and five-year reports for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021. As you may be aware, the district is the beneficiary of a San Francisco citywide developer impact fee for schools, and we use this money overwhelmingly for capital expenditures. It is limited in that way. It can only be used for very, very few, you know, salary expenses. Overwhelmingly, it goes through the facilities design construction team to deliver expansions of sites and expansions of capacity, which is also another limitation of the funding source. We collected $6.468 million in 2021, and we expended about $6.2 million. So we do use these funds and will continue to rely on them, I think particularly as we contemplate expansions and changes to sites in response to future demographic shifts. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, let's check for public comment before we do.
Thank you. Please raise your hand if you care to speak to the annual and five-year report relating to the collection of expenditure fees. Can that be repeated in Chinese and Spanish, please? Thank you. Thank you. Sing one. Chris?
Hi, I switched to a different system. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. I just wanted to ask if these funds can be used to improve school sites as we expand programs and want to offer better services to students? For example, at school sites where there are like broken windows that are almost impossible to close when it's rainy and windy, which is what I was teaching through yesterday or giving finals through yesterday. Can that be used to help fix, can these funds be used to help fix some of those things? Thanks.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Thank you for that. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Sanchez?
Thank you. Dawn, on page 10, table four, it illustrates all these projects. So one is, I'm happy to see Cleveland. I think they're building a wing there, so tearing out the bungalows that serve the kindergarten and actually building classrooms. How are, how do we prioritize which projects get funded through these developer fees?
Commissioner, I think a lot of these projects are projects that have been in the pipeline, and we do have a fund balance that has accumulated because, again, of the restriction that constrains funding, we can't use these funds actually for deferred maintenance, right? We need to use them to expand facilities in response to, you know, student population growth. So we, there are funds here that have, and I'd have to go back and get the precise amount of our existing fund balance that can be programmed. But traditionally, this has been, again, in response to site requests. When we find a project that matches the eligibility of these funds, we do try to do it and move forward, and it's really about staff bandwidth, just kind of moving slowly through these projects. So I think the answer there is we have not come forward with a request in a while to actually prioritize the remaining funds, but it's something particularly as we think about southeast facility planning that I'd like to, again, contemplate how to use these funds strategically with the board.
So can you remind us what the balance is right now?
Well, there is a fund balance of $35.4 million. And some of that fund balance, and I'm sorry, I don't have this number, has been allocated to projects but not spent. But, you know, I'd say a considerable portion of that is unexpended and unallocated. You can see in the report, there is a whole pipeline list of potential projects. And so that is the loose universe of projects that have been contemplated with these funding sources, but we have not, you know, precisely budgeted and scheduled those projects yet.
Could, when we were having the BVHM discussion around facilities needs, could this fund be used for that?
Probably not unless we were expanding the footprint of the building to accommodate an even larger student population.
Thanks. Dawn, one question I had related to just how does the developer fees and fit into the broader capital planning that you're thinking and rolling out? You know, I think now that we've come back into in-person learning, really gearing up for 2022 and really thinking about how we look at our whole portfolio of assets, land assets, including our schools and all the modernization that needs to occur along with the funding that comes with those facilities.
Commissioner, it's a great question, and I'd be happy also to discuss this in more detail at a future Buildings and Grounds Committee. But I think the headline answer is there are a couple of core funding sources, all of which we will discuss in our, hopefully, upcoming capital plan, including general obligation bond, including our life safety Meller Roost tax, and then also including these developer impact fees. I think one of the things that we need to plan for, again, strategically, is that notwithstanding the current contraction of the SFUSD student population, overall, we are still looking at dramatic growth in the city, particularly in the eastern side of the city over the next 15 to 20 years. And that we have to continue to think about, especially if there are significant changes to the student assignment policy, how to align our building footprints and the populations we conserve on the eastern side of the city with that projected growth. So I look forward to having that conversation with the board as part of our capital planning process.
That's great, thank you.
All right, if there are no other comments, we'll do a roll call vote on the motion.
Student delegate Lamb?
Yes.
Student delegate Liang?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins? Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Vice President Maliga?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
President Lopez?
Yes.
Okay, item five, we are still under section H, memorandum of understanding between United Educators of San Francisco and San Francisco Unified School District regarding the online learning program, the on-demand learning program, and the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. This is 2112-14 SO6. I need a motion and a second.
Second. Presenting this item will be our Acting Chief of Labor Relations, Daniel Menezes.
Good evening, Dr. Matthews and commissioners. The recommended action tonight is to approve the memorandum of understanding between the United Educators of San Francisco and SFUSD regarding the online learning program, the on-demand learning program, and the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you. Let's check for public comment.
Please raise your hand if you care to speak to the MOU with United Educators. Can that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please? Thank you. Sing one.
All right, any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Student delegate Lamb?
Yes.
Student delegate Liang?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander? Commissioner Bogus?
No.
Commissioner Collins? Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice President Maliga?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
And President Lopez?
Yes.
Item six, San Francisco County Office of Education, San Francisco County Plan for Expelled and At-Risk Youth, fiscal year '21 through '24. This is item 2112-14 SO7. I need a motion and a second.
Move. Second.
The staff presenting this item will be our Chief of Student Services, Bela Lousmith.
Thank you, Dr. Matthews. Actually, I'm going to defer to Assistant Superintendent Sanderson on this one, but I can give a quick introduction on the plan. So this is a triennial plan. We have to have three, a plan every three years on the services provided to students through our county schools and programs. And Assistant Superintendent Sanderson can talk a little bit more about the details of the plan.
Okay, thank you so much, Nellie. Just to go over, there are three particular schools that we engage students in to carry out this plan. That is Civic Center Secondary School, the Center for Academic Reentry and Empowerment, which many of you know as CARE, that's located within our YMCA's, both Buchanan and Bayview. And then we have Youth Chance High School. Those are all of the programs that we use to serve students, and Youth Chance is the school that's located within our juvenile probation department. But I'm more than happy to answer any questions, but those are the three primary programs that we utilize to serve students. And I'm sorry, my video was off. I just realized that the video was off.
No worries. Are there any questions or comments? Sorry, let's do public comment before we do that.
Please raise your hand, please raise your hand if you care to speak to the County Plan for Expelled and At-Risk Youth for '21 through '24. Can that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please? Thank you. Sing two hands. Hava?
Yeah, so I'm a parent, and I just discovered this for the first time. I'm still learning. I wanted to say that, you know, I grew up in Baltimore, Baltimore City. Programs like this didn't exist when I grew up. And so I just wanted to take a moment. This is a moment where SFUSD, for me, from my perspective, is doing something really good. I, having said that, of course, I'm hoping, separate from these awful budget cuts, we can continue to do preventative work so we're not expelling our students who don't need to be expelled, you know. But I just wanted to take a moment. Where I grew up, when children were expelled, they were lost. There was no additional opportunities for education. So thank you for doing this.
Thank you. Hello, Alita?
Hello, thank you for this plan. And I must say, like Hava, I am new to this. In my first pass at reading this plan, I see a lot of behavioral support. I see a lot of mention of behavior. And unless I missed it, I don't see any, any mention of academics. And what we find very often, and what we're finding through CCAS, for example, is that a lot of our students who are suspended, we're finding a lot of students are over identified for special education or completely missed for special education. We're finding, we see all the time, and in my role as special education advocate, very often, students who have externalizing behaviors, those behaviors are coming from academic frustration. So what are we doing to address the underlying academic challenges that these students are facing rather, or as much as, the behaviors? Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment.
Okay, now, are there questions? Commissioner Sanchez?
Student delegate, she'd like to first. I just wanted to say that, I want to echo the public commenters. I think that I'm glad that we have these options for students that are expelled. I also wanted to echo Alita's last point and ask that we get some detail as to how these students are doing in terms of academics, but also in terms of behavior and social, emotional health. So I'm just putting this in as a request for later on, but I'd love to see those as we do at the beginning of the year. Thanks. Just wanted to note, at least on my end, that the hyperlinks aren't working. So when you click on or try to click on like the Safe and Support of Schools Resolution, it doesn't go anywhere. So I don't know if that's supposed to or not. Bill or Nellie?
Thank you. It is supposed to. It might have been in the conversion to PDF, so we'll correct that and post one the plan that where all the links work.
And you might want to correct the amount of students. It says we have approximately 53,000 students.
Thank you.
A number of times in the document.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, let's do a roll call vote.
Student delegate Lamb?
Yes.
Student delegate Liang?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Vice President Maliga?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Did you say yes? Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
I'm sorry. President Lopez?
Yes.
Item seven. And then these are, this is a few sections away, but we will be hearing on a report from every one of our committees as a heads up to all of our chairs. Item seven, under section H, resolution finding that as a result of the state of emergency declared by California Governor Gavin Newsom on March 4th, 2020, it is necessary to continue to conduct virtual meetings to avoid imminent risks to the health and safety of attendees. This is item 219-28 SO3. And just to clarify, we are voting on this once again because we have to do it every 30 days, correct? I need a motion and a second.
Second.
I'd like to call on General Counsel Hope.
President Lopez, I think the board and now the public has seen this item many times. It probably doesn't need a lot of explanation. The one thing I just would add, I did get some questions about why are we doing this again? We just did it last meeting. It's necessary to look forward. So in order to have virtual meetings for the next 30 days, we need to have enacted the resolution. So just because of our meeting schedule, it's necessary to bring this back to you.
Thank you. Before we speak on this, I'd like to.
Thank you. Before we speak on this, I'd like to open it up to public comment.
Please raise your hand if you care to speak to the governor's continuance for virtual meetings. Can that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please?
Buenas noches, por favor levante su mano si desea un comentario público. Gracias.
Thank you.
If you want to discuss the plan with the United Educators, please raise your hand. Thank you.
Thank you. C four, hands up, President Lopez. Or six, actually, excuse me. Six hands up. Hello, Sharon. Hello, Ms. Marshall. Ms. Marshall, are you there?
I can hear you now. Thank you so much, Mrs. Steele. I am very much in favor of this 30-day extension of virtual meetings for everyone's safety, especially for our students and parents, and especially for grandparents who are raising our students. And in lieu of this new variant, thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, panelist Michelle, you can go ahead.
Thank you, Judson. Yes, this is Michelle Jacmanegus with the Parent Advisory Council to the Board of Ed.
I found you some panels.
Ms. Marshall, you need to mute, please.
Thank you. And I just want to also just reaffirm what you heard from the PAC report earlier this evening, what we've continued to say each time this comes up and what others, you're hearing from others, that being able to participate virtually is, is really a game changer for families of all sizes and shapes, as Ms. Marshall commented. Many of our grandparents are raising our kiddos. It's, it keeps us safer and it just also really, really improves our ability to be able to participate for our parent leaders. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Chris?
Hi, Chris Klaus, again. I'm just saying that I support the idea of continuing a virtual aspect to meetings, but I am very much looking forward to being back in person at board meetings and continuing advocacy with you all physically in the room. I just think that it's a lot easier to do it in the room when you're actually able to see the microphone in front of you and see the timer that's on the wall and see the people that you're talking to and have you all see the people that you're hearing from. I think that that would increase the advocacy that people feel capable of, and it would increase their confidence that they are heard and that their comments are appreciated. And I'd like to point out that I help run a virtual version of our faculty meetings at Washington High School while the faculty meeting is happening in person for those staff members who have extra concerns around COVID. So I know it's totally possible to run a hybrid meeting. And if you need help, more than happy to help you figure that out. Have a good night.
Hello, Tara.
I completely agree with continuing to run our virtual meetings. And as the previous speaker said, we can do hybrid easy. I mean, we have excellent technology to do all these things, to have everyone connected. I know we have to do this every 30 days to say, hey, do we want to keep doing this? But I think maybe as a district, we can just enact this to say, this is how we're going to do it from now on, even if we have to say every 30 days, just, you know, to be in line with the requirements. But just as a district that we know forever, we're going to do virtual and we're going to do in-person. I think hybrid is the way to go, and we should pass something that says such.
Thank you. Hello, Leslie.
Hi, my name is Leslie, who I'm the Secretary of USF. And I would like to advocate for both having in.
I apologize, Leslie. Go ahead.
Hi, you can hear me now?
Yes, sorry about that.
Thank you. I'd like to advocate to continue having an online version. We've always had some TV version where you can also view or Zoom, whichever. But I also really think that it's really important to have our leaders have a closer relationship with our constituent, with the constituents that they serve. And that includes students, families, and educators, and the community. And it helps bring that close, that relationship closer together in order for us to actually move forward together and collaborate and talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Paulina?
Yes, yes. Hi, this is Paulina Fair. So I wanted to say that I support the virtual meetings. I am open to hybrid, maybe going forward, but for this 30-day window, I do think that we should stay virtual, not even necessarily because of COVID, but the time, you know, that these meetings go up to is really hard to, you know, plan around if you go in person. And I think the virtual aspect allows people like myself to be able to get on from the comfort of our homes. And that's how, you know, I would be able to join, so.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from our student delegates? Or commissioners? I see Commissioner Sanchez and Commissioner Alexander.
Yeah, I just, hoping that staff is canvassing other districts, what they're doing if there's hybrid being done in Oakland or other districts, how they're doing it, because I would rather have hybrid than just one or the other. So what are other districts doing? And how can we emulate them, if they're doing it at all? Do you know of any other districts, or have we asked other districts, Superintendent Matthews?
I know the two in the East Bay that I talked to are still, one is virtual, one is doing the same thing we're doing. And in the South Bay, they're actually back in just, but it's not hybrid. So no one is doing hybrid. I'm not saying they can't, but I'm just saying none of them are doing. The three large ones in the Bay area aren't doing. I think part of it is, you know, and we, we think the issues that, like in closed session, a microphone open, the, all of those things are probably the reason why.
Yeah, I mean, I've raised this issue the last few times and voted no on it. And I'm getting increasingly concerned, especially now that we have public comments from union leadership. Just now, we have public comments from parents and others who want to be able to be here in person. And I guess I'm concerned, that my understanding of state law is that we can, like, it has to be related to COVID. And I mean, I'm reading even the resolve. It says that because of the current limitations of district services, personnel, equipment, and facilities, meeting in person will cause and will continue to cause imminent risk to the health and safety of attendees at public meetings of the board. And I don't see how allowing at least some people in this room would cause an imminent risk to health and safety. And so to, in my view, I think we're, like, I don't even, I'm not even sure that we're following the, meeting the requirements of state law by prohibiting people from being here. So I'm just curious if we have a thought on that. But it just, and aside from that, because I guess I hear, sorry, but I just hear what the public is saying is like, they want that, the access, right? At home, which is great. But the state law doesn't say that. The state law says we actually have to meet in person unless there's an imminent risk. And the, and the providing the access isn't anything we do voluntarily, right? Am I missing that?
No, I, so in response to your question of whether or not we're in compliance, the reason that we note that we have limited resources is because of the pandemic. So if we had unlimited resources, we could probably fashion, you know, a way to have in-person and remote meetings. And certainly, if the board directs us to do that, then we will direct resources to that effort. But currently, because we have resources going in many other directions, including getting schools and keeping schools safe, that, that has been the impediment to bringing back in-person meetings here.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I just, as a parent, I, I know we have more participation from families, especially families with multiple children, because we have the ability for folks to, to participate online. At the same time, I, I do feel like we've lost a lot. And I mean, I think even you, you have never served on a board where there was an actual audience. That's kind of crazy, right? And so there's, at times, it actually feels more unsafe in this climate. And at, at the same time, people are here in person and they're participating in person, and that does change the dynamic. See, being able to see people face to face. I guess what, I'm a little getting frustrated, which is not knowing when this is going to end. And I think with new variants, I mean, we're going to consistently have to deal with COVID. I do want to start bringing people back in in a way that's safe. And I just wanted to know when staff would be able to share with us kind of what our options are, because I feel like we just keep kicking the can down the road. We've had a major need to address the budget, so that's been a priority on our agendas. But I'm just wondering if that's something that we could prioritize in the new year, actually making, you know, having a conversation about how we could move towards a hybrid model.
So we could definitely put that on the agenda for January, and we could bring options for the board.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Let's do a roll call vote on this item.
Student delegate Lamb?
Yes.
Student delegate Liang?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
No.
Commissioner Bogus?
No.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Vice President Maliga?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
And President Lopez?
Yes.
My vice.
All right. Before we move on to Section I, I'd like to excuse our student delegates. Thank you for all of your work. And actually, have a restful winter break. Okay, we have a few more items. Section I, Introduction of Proposals and Assignment to Committee. Item one, Public and Board Comment on Proposals Being Introduced for First Reading is Board Policy 5023, Translation and Interpretation. Can we see if there are any public speakers to this policy, which we will limit to 10 minutes?
Please raise your hand if you care to speak to the Board Policy on Translation. And can that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Buenas noches, por favor levante su mano si desea un comentario público. Gracias.
If you want to discuss the plan with the United Educators, please raise your hand.
Alita?
Hello, everyone. On behalf of the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education, I'd like to respectfully request that IEP documents be added to this, this policy. As you all know, IEPs can take up to a month to translate. And so if they, or if a family has gone through their meeting and is waiting to sign their documentation until they've got a physical copy that they can review, then we are delaying and denying services and supports to families. That is definitely inequitable. So having some guidelines in here and the best practices of a much shorter timeline for interpretation of documents is something that the CAC is respectfully requesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, go ahead.
Thank you, Judson. Michelle here with the PAC. And I just wanted to lift up what you heard from the PAC's report earlier this evening, that we support this policy in order to serve families so they can fully participate in their children's education and engage in school and district-level meetings and decision-making processes. That being said, I want to elevate Alita Fisher's comments about the need to be able to do this in a timely manner so that we are adequately and properly supporting our students and families and their education. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
Hi, I'm, I'm calling in as a special education teacher who deals with those IEPs that Alita was talking about. It is so frustrating to me as a case manager to sit there and say, you know, family, I submitted it. I'm sorry. I'm still waiting. And not be able to give them what they need to actually provide consent to get necessary changes to IEPs consented to and get services to students who need them. I'm also concerned with all of the talk about budget cuts. I just want to make sure that we're not thinking of cutting to interpretation and translation services, because I can only imagine that slowing this process down even more, and it's already slower than it should be. So just while you're talking about this, keep that in mind, please. Thanks.
Thank you. Geraldine?
Hi, my name is Geraldine Anderson, and I too am in support of this policy. I've been in several meetings with Ms. Robertson, who does deal with the IEPs and a lot of Latinx parents who have met with her at least on four different occasions after business hours. And it's very true that we do need this policy put in place just for diversity, equity, and inclusivity, especially for those who do not speak the English language. We need to mirror what your website states, that you will be inclusive of all languages. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Tom?
Hi, I'm a special ed teacher. I think I just want to, I have a lot of IEPs with interpretation, and the interpreters that come are very professional and respectful. I just want to kind of give that to them, because, and the people who do have to do the writing, like, there's a lot that probably is on their plate, so I don't want to assume anything in this. Also, on the form, when you submit to have it interpreted, I'm just saying for myself, sometimes it comes back quicker, but you say the date that you want it by, or hopefully want it by. I'm not saying that happens throughout the district. I'm not implying that. I'm just saying that, you know, I know everyone's working hard, so I don't want to assume the worst in that. And I also think if a parent at the IEP agrees to it, you know, the, the site can figure out how to put some services or things into place in there. So I don't think it's the end-all, be-all, but that's just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Thank you. And given that this is our first reading, I will be referring this to the Rules, Policy, and Legislation Committee, unless I hear otherwise. Clarifying question.
I guess I had a clarifying question, too. I was wondering if there could be, I guess, a fiscal analysis of kind of what we're already currently spending on, and if there's any changes that, or increases in spending that we're kind of projecting moving forward, kind of based off the need. Well, so that analysis exists. I'm glad you asked. And, and I don't know if staff wants to speak to it, but the, but at the Rules Committee this month, that was going to be part of my report. We actually, they presented a really, really detailed and comprehensive analysis with costs and projections. And so maybe that could be shared with, I mean, it's on board docs, but maybe we could email it to all the commissioners, so folks could see. So, because this item was sort of, it hadn't been introduced, but this idea was talked about at the last Rules Committee meeting. And so then it'll be continued at the next meeting as well.
The only thing I would add to that, Commissioner, is that if we do make changes, as, you know, we heard some speakers suggest tonight, that would have budget implications, then we could refer it from rules back to budget. So it could be heard there.
That's, I definitely will look at the docs from the last meeting to just kind of get that information. And I guess just making sure that we could just have information about how much service we're getting for those dollars. So not just the numbers, but like, how much of that is kind of helping us to reach our total goal, and if it is enough, or if it's short, and kind of in which ways. Yeah, and as General Counsel Hope mentioned, there were some ideas for adding services, which would definitely cost more, right? So that's, that's us in addition to the point you were raising. So I think all those things, and hopefully, we can take it, I think it should go to budget as well as rules.
So I just wanted to ask questions about the process. So I just wanted to ask questions about the process because I had some concerns. We talked about, you know, we can put all these things in a list, but if parents don't know that those are their rights, there's, there's things that are currently in our policy that parents don't even know exists. And so I had questions about how we're assessing need to determine how to budget for things and how we're communicating and then how we're like, how we're kind of holding ourselves accountable for actually providing what we're putting in our policies. And so what's the process? It sounds like Commissioner Bogus also had some questions about things he might want to, I don't know if he'd want to add, but what's the process for, you know, having that conversation? I know this isn't the place to do it, but I just wanted to know where that is. Because this is such an important issue in our district when it comes to families being involved and feeling supportive.
I think there are a couple of choices, Commissioner. So if we think that this is going to require substantial or it warrants, let me put it that way, substantial involvement and comment from commissioners, then we could refer it to a COW instead of to rules and to budget. Or you could, of course, come to rules and/or budget and make those suggestions, comments, and ask questions, so.
I would propose that this is such an important issue in our district that and because if I make a recommendation and it has budget implications, it's like it could just keep going back and forth, that it might make more sense for us to put it in a COW. But I'll leave that up to other colleagues to see what their ideas are.
All right, any other comments?
We just need your guidance, President Lopez, as to where to refer this.
We want to make that decision right now.
I might support the COW idea because it is, I do think it is cross cutting. And I think, actually, what staff put together for rules last time, I think could, would be worth presenting to the whole board and actually maybe adding some of, some analysis on some of these other questions and the options. I think that it might make sense to do that at COW, in my opinion.
Okay, let's refer to committee the whole. All right. Section J, Board Members' Reports. Item one, Report from Recent Committee Meetings. We'll begin, as mentioned, we'll be hearing from all the committees. We'll begin with the Ad Hoc Committee on Student Assignment, which happened on Monday, November 15th. Commissioner Bogus?
Yeah, just to provide an update from that committee, we shared updates from staff kind of on the progress as well as to comments from the public. And really, I think, trying to figure out how we can meet more often as we go into the new year so that we can really finish up the work of kind of identifying kind of our zone parameters and priorities and in which ways we will have to alter funding and staffing for school sites to ensure that each of the zones are equitable. But I would say those are the big highlights. We are planning to have two meetings, a meeting in January and a meeting in February of next year. And so as we get those scheduled, we'll make sure to post those publicly so folks can participate. That's all, but I better have, thank you.
Okay. This is followed by the Budget and Business Services Committee. Commissioner Lamb, you've met twice since then, so feel free to report on both November 17th and December 1st.
Thank you. No surprise, it was really focused in on the budget balancing plan and having deeper discussions around also the multi-year projections. We also had a presentation about our long-term liabilities and OPEV, which is around our benefits that we provide to our workforce after retirement and really looking at what that analysis looks like long-term and had some future, some discussions around with Prop G and the positive ruling from the courts, ruling in favor of Prop G. We had a discussion around the potential proposals of where we would like to spend that estimated $150 million. And recognizing that what came out of that dialogue of that $150 million, the majority of the committee did express that wanted to go towards one-time funds and acknowledging the structural deficit and that we wouldn't be able to rely on a source like Prop G moving forward.
All right, thank you. Item three, Report from the Ad Hoc Committee on Personnel Matters, Labor Relations, and Affordability. Commissioner Sanchez, this happened on November 18th.
Yeah, thank you. I hadn't chaired a meeting in a while. This committee only meets three times a year. The biggest takeaway is from the staff report, and it was a 30-page report you can find on Board Docs, it's really well done, reflects the diminished capacity for California and San Francisco, of course, to achieve robust staffing, particularly at the site level. So throughout the state, there is a growing number of retirements and resignations, which furthers reducing supply of teachers and others that work in our schools. The teacher pipeline problems are exacerbated by teacher testing policies and inadequate financial aid for completing preparation programs. And teacher workload and burnout are major concerns, and we talked a lot about that tonight. SFUSD opened the school year with 49 classroom openings that were not filled. And as of November 15th, we have 137 para openings, most of which are special education para, 32 certificate classroom teacher openings. The good news is that there are no site administrator openings. And the fulfillment rate for substitute for teachers, paras, and early education range from 35 to 44%. So in other words, substitutes are not showing up. And so classes are not staffed, and that leads to students having to be split up and put in other classrooms or existing staff that are support staff being put into those classrooms. There's other information in the report around the diversity in our recruitment efforts and who we actually have staffed in our schools. I encourage people to look at the report. Thank you.
Great. Item four, Report from the Buildings, Grounds, and Services Committee from Monday, November 22nd. Commissioner, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So we met with the Buildings and Grounds Commission, and there was one item on the agenda, and that was an update from the Mission Bay School Project. There are several milestones that the school project is walking into. And the big ones are the completion of the EIR, there's the land transfer we've been working on with UCSF, and then the beginning of the site remediation. This is an item that's going to come back to BNG next week on the 20th for further discussion. Mission Bay also has several, several next steps that are going to be things that our colleagues should tune into. And I think Chief Kamal Nathan may be making rounds and checking in with folks in terms of critical next steps for the Mission Bay project.
Okay, item six, we already heard from Budget and Business Services. Item six, Report from the Rules, Policy, and Legislation Committee on Monday, December 6th.
Yeah, so as I mentioned, we spent a lot of time discussing the interpretation and translation policy. We had public comment from a number of parents, and we had a great staff report that laid out what we do now and a couple of possible changes, which were, which again, we haven't done any budget analysis on, but they're in the end of the PowerPoint. And those were recommended by, by parents in response to feedback. And then also that we discussed the issue that Commissioner Collins referred to, which is that there are also things that we're already doing that are in our policy that may be inconsistent in terms of implementation. So we also, and so that was a really long discussion, most of the meeting, actually. And then we also talked about our state legislative priorities, which you saw the link to the letter that Deputy Superintendent Lee referred to in the presentation today. The, in Rules Committee, we actually adopted a set of priorities, which the two main ones are, which were also both in that letter, we're working on increasing LCS, LCFF funding and the special education funding issue and advocating at the state level for that. So, and I think staff has a really good, again, Deputy Superintendent Lee and Viva Mogi now is taking over all the government relations. And I think they have a really great strategy for addressing some of those issues. And they may be asking commissioners to support with that in the coming weeks and months in terms of doing that state-level advocacy.
Thank you. And last, item seven, Report from the Curriculum and Program Committee that happened yesterday.
Thank you. Yeah, we had three items on our agenda, one informational and two action items. The informational item was an update on the success for all Latinx students resolution. And that presentation is available via Board Docs if folks want to look at that. And we had two action items. One was on the creation of the QT PAC. And that was moved forward with a positive recommendation to the Budget Committee. And the other item for action was the literacy resolution, which we continued and will continue at the next curriculum meeting.
All right. Section J, Continued. Item two, Board Delegates to Membership Organizations. I have CSBA and I believe Commissioners Maliga and Lamb recently attended.
So we attended CSBA's annual conference as well as delegate meeting. And overall, it was pretty exciting because folks hadn't been together for two years in person. And I'll just name, it was really nice to be with colleagues around the state. And I think people just really appreciated sharing what we've all been through in the last two years through COVID, the pandemic. And, you know, somewhat of our colleagues are experiencing is actually quite different than, you know, what we're seeing here. But overall, there were workshops and attended a couple related to governance and fiscal, no surprise, fiscal oversight. And overall, just I think it is a very positive, you know, space for trainings and building, continue to kind of refresh and continuous learning as board members and hearing about also some of the latest advocacy tracks, similar to what Deputy Superintendent Lee and team is already working on and looking ahead on really sustainable funding for public education across the state. But, you know, going back to that, we're seeing workforce crisis, similar to what we're experiencing here, as well as the loss of student enrollment. That really was the, you know, a real consistent challenge that school boards are tackling in all areas of the state.
How do I follow that? It was, we had a great time. It was really nice to be in San Diego with other school board members, their superintendents and their staff and Commissioner Lamb. I highly encourage our school board to go next year. You know, I think it's a good way to, one, just kind of like meet everyone who's in the state, kind of learn and just kind of see and learn methods and then also build connections. Had so many good opportunities to get mentorships and just kind of like learn from other folks who's been in the game for like 20-plus years. Actually got to call some people back. But just wonderful people willing to like share their experience. What else? And we were definitely out there, you know, talking up our school district, you know, a lot of people are supporting us, a lot of love, a lot of support throughout the state. That we're experiencing similar issues across the, across the state with a lot of other folks. Somebody said 85% of the schools, districts, and the state are going through the same thing, so we're not alone. What else? Yeah, and it was a good time. And so I hope next year we could all take some time to go out there and enjoy.
Commissioner Maliga and I were doing our jobs. We are also, you know, talking up about our superintendent hire. So definitely putting it out there to the networks. And they know that we have embarked on our process. And so there'll probably be some, hopefully some interested folks who will also be reaching out to HYA and to the board.
All right, thank you. Item three, All Other Reports by Board Members. Seeing none. Item four, Calendar of Committee Meetings. I am announcing what is posted in the agenda. The Budget and Business Services will be meeting on Wednesday, January 5th, 2021, at 4:00 PM. Buildings, Grounds, and Services is meeting on Monday, December 20th, at 5:00 PM. Oh, sorry, the Budget and Business Services will be meeting in 2022. Curriculum and Program, Monday, January 10th, 2022, at 4:00 PM. Rules, Policy, and Legislation, Monday, January 3rd, 2021, at 4:00 PM.
I think we decided to actually cancel the January meeting because, especially now that we've decided to send that item to a COW, because we won't really have much legislative update either. So we'll just go with the February date, right? Yeah.
Cool, okay. At the next meeting, there'll be an update on the February.
It's February 7th, I think.
That first Monday?
Yeah, the first Monday in February.
Okay. Ad Hoc Committee on Student Assignment is to be determined as well as Personnel Matters, Labor, and Affordability.
That's going to be February 17th.
Personnel Matters will be meeting on February 17th?
Yes, 4:00 PM.
Okay. Great. Last item, Section K, Memorial Adjournment. I'd like to call on Dr. Matthews for adjournment in memory of Sherman Elementary School Para Educator Andrew Zeeman.
Thank you, President Lopez. We adjourned this meeting in memory of Andrew Zeeman. Andrew was a longtime member of the Sherman Elementary School community. He served for seven years as a para educator, a noon monitor, and an after-school staff member. He also attended Sherman as a student, as did his father and his great uncle. Andrew was tragically killed in a car crash as he waited to cross the street to get to work on November 10th. He was much loved by the students at Sherman and highly respected by the staff. He was known for his caring and kind heart, his calm and cool demeanor, and for making all students feel seen and heard. As an educator, he was dedicated to honing his craft. He invested a lot of time in building meaningful relationships with students, getting to know them as learners and as people. He was truly a warm demander, working with them to maximize their growth and awareness. We appreciate the impact that Andrew has had on the many lives of students, families, and staff at Sherman, and we share our sympathy with his family and the Sherman community. We are grateful to all of our para educators who, like Andrew, strive to bring out the best in students each and every day. We thank you for your service and dedication.
Thank you very much. Section L, Closed Session. Before we go into closed session, I call on any speakers to the closed session items listed in the agenda. There will be a total of five minutes.
Please raise your hand if you care to speak to any of the items on the closed session agenda. Can that be repeated in Chinese and Spanish, please?
Buenas noches. Por favor, levante la mano si desea añadir un comentario público sobre la sección a puertas cerradas. Gracias.
If you want to make a comment on the education policy, please raise your hand. Thank you.
Seeing none.
All right. I recess the regular meeting in order for the board to go into closed session. Great. I resume the regular meeting. Section L, Reconvene to Open Session. Item one, Vote on Student Expulsion Matters. I move approval of the stipulated expulsion agreement of one high school student, matter number 2021-2022, dash number 06, from the district for the remainder of the fall semester 2021 and the following spring semester of 2022. Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call, Ms. Lenoff?
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins? Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Vice President Maliga?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
President Lopez?
Yes.
Seven nyes.
I move approval of the stipulated expulsion agreement of one high school student, matter number 2021-2022-number 07, from the district for the remainder of the fall semester 2021 and the following spring semester of 2022. Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call, Ms. Lenoff?
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Vice President Maliga?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
President Lopez?
Yes.
Item two, Report from Closed Session. In three matters of anticipated litigation, the board bias vote of seven nyes provided direction to the general counsel. And section N, Adjournment. There is no further business, so this meeting is adjourned.